Okay, everyone, we're going to call the meeting to order. Pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, August 24, 2021. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Marra?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that active recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Marra?
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Calley?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Dunn texted that he was going to be late, but he should be here.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Silikowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists?
Okay. Can we all stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Move the Board acknowledge the death of Jack Phillips, retired principal, and Yanet Patzner, retired elementary teacher, and Nicholas Nissen, OBHS alumni class of 2013, and Joseph Riggio, OBHS alumni class of 2009, and express its deepest sympathy to their family and friends. So next we have Code of Ethics Corner. Mrs. Calley, I believe that was you?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. De Carroll. This month's Code of Ethics Highlight of the Month: The Board Member Will Hold Confidential All Matters Pertaining to the Schools Which, If Disclosed, Would Needlessly Injure Individuals or the Schools. In all other matters, he or she will provide accurate information and, in concert with fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
Thank you. Next we have District Goals and Board Goals, TBD. We have a meeting scheduled for September 9 to review all our Board goals, whether we want to change them, update them, and also to go over our Board self-evaluations. Last I checked, I didn't check today, but last I checked, we still have four Board members that haven't completed their self-evaluation, so if you all can please make an attempt to get that done by August 30, so our field rep, Mary Ann Friedman, can have time to compile everything, that would be great, and we'd be able to use that information on our September 9 meeting. Next we have Approval of the Minutes. I need a motion to move item number one.
I'll move it. Burns will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Marra?
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. And should we have? Oh, no. We're going to have our student representative will be here for our September meeting, and as I think I mentioned last week, it's Anthony Toronto, and we're very excited to have him join our meetings in September. Recognition.
Thank you very much. Madam President, Dr. Hooker, do we have a representative from McDivitt School here? Okay. Move the Board to recognize the PTA of James Madison, I'm sorry, James McDivitt Elementary School for their prestigious selection as National PTA School of Excellence. Can we please have the representatives from McDivitt School PTA please stand up? We know that not many school PTAs are selected per year for this prestigious recognition, and we know a lot goes, a lot of hard work and data collection and submissions to receive this honor, so we thank you, and I hopefully, when and if, as I've done already, the PTA joins you at McDivitt School from the state PTA representatives, we can join you there and have a more intimate ceremony congratulating you some more. Thank you very much for everything you've done. One applause. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Can I have a motion to move recognition?
Calley will move.
Thank you, Ms. Calley. Can I have a second?
I'll move it.
Which one?
Me.
Mr. De Prima. Okay. All right. Any discussion?
Me. Am I that predictable? Okay. As a Board member, every elementary school, every, both middle schools and the high school have a special place in my heart, but I wouldn't be totally honest if I didn't say that McDivitt had an ex, little extra special place in my heart, as my children are graduates of McDivitt, and I was on the Board, the PTA Board of McDivitt from the time my older one walked into kindergarten, all the way up to president, when my younger one graduated, so I just wanted to throw my own congratulations into the ring. It's a great accomplishment.
Anyone else? I would just also like to echo Ms. Calley, as a, as a former PTA mom myself, president of three PTAs and whatever, I know how hard it is to do the job that you guys are doing, and I know how much effort you guys put in, total volunteer, half the time probably taking money out of your own pocket to do it, so congratulations, and it's, it's a really hu, huge achievement, and congratulations to you all. So on that note, can we have a roll call to move recognition? Mr. Marra?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, are you ready?
Upstand.
Ms. Alice Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Recognition, resolution number one passes.
Awesome. On to Superintendent's Report. Mr. Sididino?
Mr. Dunn, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to consider that vote. It's just, we were recognizing the PTA at McDivitt School for receiving recognition as the National PTA School, so knowing that information, I know you wouldn't want on their record an abstention for such a prestigious honor. Now that you know what it is, would you like to cast your vote?
Absolutely. I will make sure that I vote yes for that. That's a very good recognition and I'm very proud. Thank you for enlightening me, sir. Yes.
There's going to be two parts tonight. It'll be a Superintendent's Report and a progress towards goals. I'm going to go with the progress towards goals first, from Mr. Marra is going to give his update of construction projects and projects around the district that we've worked towards this summer. I'm going to be reviewing the latest version of the Road Forward Safe Return Plan. If anybody at home or in the audience would like to follow along for this new information that, again, will be adapted, will be changed, I'm sure, because information changes every 24 minutes in the world of education in New Jersey. We will do so, but if you want to follow along, it's on the district website, right there on the front page, where you can follow the information. Mr. Marra?
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. These projects that I'll be referring to are projects that are funded from our capital reserve funds and also our maintenance reserve funds. The largest project that is presently underway is the Lombardi Field Project, which is the replacement of the carpet and the track. That project began on Sep, on June 21 and is estimated to be completed on September 7. In terms of required maintenance projects that we've done over the summer, at the high school, we've done cement repairs at the main entrance, we've done blacktop paving outside of door 33, we have done flood remediation outside the auto shop, and we are modifying the auto lifts in the auto shop, and that, that is presently on the pro, in front, work in progress. In Sandberg, we did new cement work at the main entrance. In Salk, also, we did main entrance cement work. We also are installing new stage lighting. Again, these are required maintenance items, and we installed, we, we are completing a cement handicap ramp, ramp in room 2, 312B, and that is in, almost completed, it's work in progress. For Hees, we were required to do flood remediation at the main entrance. At McDivitt, we are starting this week to do blacktop at near the main entrance. At Sharah, also, blacktop at the main entrance and door number nine. At Miller, we are doing new blacktop paving at the main entrance. At Shepherd, we, we installed new fencing around a utility pole. Carpenter, we installed a new flag pole. At Cooper, we are doing flood remediation also, and at Cooper, we are also doing exterior PA speakers, which should be concluded by the end, by the end of the summer. Also, in the Lombardi Field, again, this is a required maintenance project, the area where the pole vaults are, that area has been, had a major drainage problem there since I've been here, it's almost nine years, we are also remediating that. And finally, we are just about to sign off on the purchase of six new buses for the school district to be in place by October 1. Thank you, Mr. Sididino.
Thank you. So as we look into the Road Forward and what the 21, 22 school year looks like with the guidance that we have today, the first slide shows us what has been mandated by the state and what has been decided by, through local decision. Under the state mandate, schools will operate five full days per week unless an outbreak impacts the temporary closure of a school or district. According to Executive Order 251, all students, staff, and visitors will be required to wear a mask at all times inside any buses and facilities, except when eating, drinking, playing physical instruments, participating in aerobic activity, impede health, or extreme heat conditions. There is no remote learning option, aside from medically documented circumstances. Executive Order 253 relates, released this morning, mandates that all public, private, parochial, preschool programs, elementary, secondary schools, including charter and Renaissance schools, must maintain a policy that requires all covered workers to either provide adequate proof to be covered in the setting that they have been fully vaccinated or submit to COVID-19 testing at a minimum of one to two times weekly. This requirement shall take effect on October 18, 2021, at which time any covered workers that are, have not provided adequate proof they have been fully vaccinated, must submit a minimum of weekly or twice-weekly testing on an ongoing basis until fully vaccinated. More information obviously will come about that as the information unfolds. Through local decisioning, visitors will be allowed in the schools for pre-approved school-related business until further notice. Business of visitors will be asked to provide contract sheets and proof of vaccination. No large indoor assemblies will be had at this time. Extracurricular activities will continue to operate at pre-pandemic protocol until further notice. Field trips are limited to job coaching experiences only until further notice. Home health screening is suspended, meaning you do not have to fill out the home health screening form prior to sending your child to school. Temperature taking at the school prior to entry is suspended. The use of isolation tents in school is suspended. These are all, unless something changes within the region and we get new direction from the Department of Health, Department of Education, or the state itself. Protocols for the 21, 22 school year, approximately 1,000 plexiglass units are being made available to mitigate viral spread in areas in which social distancing is less practicable. Social distancing at least three feet between students and six feet between student and teacher will be the standard used to the greatest extent practicable. Two washable face masks will be provided for every student and staff member. Every school and bus has disposable face masks. An abundance of hand sanitizer, disinfecting wipes, cleaning products will be made available for all facilities. Signage promoting hand hygiene and respiratory responsibility is displayed at all school In the area of cleaning, maintenance, and ventilation, bathrooms will be cleaned and disinfected hourly. Classrooms will be disinfected during the school day and nightly. All rooms will be set to the greatest outside air transition possible. Regular sanitation and disinfection will be done with Virix, a product that we've used pre-pandemic, of all hard, non-porous surfaces and common touchpoints. The district has invested in a viral cleanse devices that have been situated in every learning and common space to effectively clean the air of viruses, bacteria, debris, and mold with the use of UV lights and MIR-15 HEPA filtration. Student or staff illness and quarantine. Again, this is a slide that has changed three times in the past three weeks. We will have these situations as we did in the spring of last year. Our school nurses are well-versed in the protocols, and their offices are well-equipped with the proper PPE materials. Vaccinated student and staff members who are exposed to a positive or probable case will need, will not need to quarantine. However, the CDC recommends that vaccinated persons who are exposed to a COVID-positive individual test between the three- and five-day point of exposure. Unvaccinated student and staff members who are exposed to a positive or probable case will need to quarantine. Quarantine period is now 14 days of symptom-free from the date of exposure. This information could continue to change based upon the regional pandemic status. Yesterday's status, we were operating from an area of yellow, which we've been since, I mean, June, and we are now back to the orange status. Vaccinations and testing. Vaccinations are widely available, free of charge, and according to the data, is the best way to protect oneself and others from severe illness. At the present time, the state of New Jersey has not mandated the students to be vaccinated. We encourage everyone eligible to discuss vaccinations with their personal healthcare provider. The district, in partnership with CVS, will be hosting an influenza and, hopefully, a COVID vaccination clinic on Saturday, September 11. The influ, and the influenza has already been approved. The new, I would say, demand for COVID vaccinations has had them not approved yet, the availability for COVID vaccinations at our clinic, set for Saturday, September 11, and that would be from 11 to 5 p.m. The district is training medical staff to provide optional COVID screening. Again, optional COVID screening. We believe in giving our community access to the medical tests and treatments to ease their minds during this health crisis. Our food services program will provide free breakfast and free lunch for all students district-wide, including the before and after care program. All students will use touchless scanners to process food orders. All student ID cards will be utilized for processing of food orders K to 12. Olbridge High School will have an application for food services available. Grab and go carts located throughout each of the buildings will be at the discretion of the building principal. Students can remove their masks, eat and drink with social distancing of three feet or to the greatest extent practicable, including the use of outdoor tables. In the area of transportation, according to federal and state requirements, all occupants of a school bus or van must wear a mask while riding transportation. So just, social distancing will not be practicable during full-service educational programming. By that, we mean when we have all students in school at all times, we do not have the space on buses to provide social distancing. Transportation will operate for approved extracurricular activities, again, subject to change as the regional health concerns change. Transportation will provide every regular route with a seating chart to assist in contact tracing in case there's a positive case on the bus. Transportation vehicles will be disinfected at student contact points after each run. In the area of communication, Olbridge Township Public School leadership will maintain close communication with the community stakeholders to provide information and share resources on COVID-19 transmission, prevention, and control measures, and we will continue to maintain procedures for local health department notification and response to COVID-19 illnesses in the school setting. Local notification will rely upon telecommunications for close contacts and email and/or Thrill Share Mass Notification System for people outside the close-contact zone, meaning we're not going to have phone calls to your house as we've had in the past to let you know about cases around, around the community. You'll receive an email, and information will be posted on the district website. That concludes this version of the report. Like I said, it will continue to change as conditions change and mandates and requirements change. I just hope that we can all work together and come, come away with the best possible outcome. Everyone's goal is to have our students in school full-time for a full year, and that's the best possible outcome we can have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. Mr. Marra, is there any correspondence? No. Any special committee reports?
Oh, I did have one. So just briefly, we met before the last agenda session, and for those that weren't there, we spoke about the Road Forward and its implications, and it is required, and the implications of what would happen if it didn't pass. After that, we spoke about people grouping and abolishing that, and I'm very excited to get rid of that policy. And moving forward, I do have discussions with Dr. Tui and Mr. Sididino to discuss policy 9241, and that's the report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Burns. Anyone else?
Yes, next month we will have a committee report on curriculum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silikowski. Okay, we're going to move on to hearing of the residents' agenda items only. I'm not going to read the whole write-up, you can read that in your agenda, but I just want to remind everyone that we do have a five-minute time limit, so you're welcome to come up to the podium now and speak on anything relating to the agenda.
Madam President, while anybody's coming up, and if I may add anything to this portion of it, I, I, I enjoy and agree with everyone's right to be passionate about concerns, especially related to school district. There's one thing I just want to remind everyone. While most public forums take place in either a courthouse or chambers, this is not the case. This is a school. This is an extension of a classroom. We have students present here, working under a work-study guide that allows them to be compensated but also get credit for their coursework, so this is an extension of their learning classroom. So as parents, I just encourage everyone to use the decorum that they would want for anyone entering their child's classroom, and use that going forward. I know in the past meetings, we've had our student representatives here asked to be walked outside because they were concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. Okay, so I don't see anyone that wants to speak, and so, yep, I'm gonna, you, if, if you want to speak, you can get, just come on up. You can, come on up. You have to, you do have to come up. Come on. Yeah. If you can just state your name. Yep. Yep. I'm sorry, just come on over to the, yeah.
Barbara Moser.
Hi.
Barbara Moser. I, um, I, can you just clarify what you said about a teacher having exposure? You said something about fourteen days. Is there somebody exposed? I, you know, I can't hear when you're speaking with the mask on.
I'll speak louder. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So the exposure for anyone who is unvaccinated right now, the quarantine time is fourteen days. Yesterday, it was ten days. Today, we entered into, according to the CALI, that's provided by the Department of Health, into the, or the orange area, which changes it from a ten-day quarantine to a fourteen-day quarantine.
So if, so let me just make sure I understand what you're saying. So if you're not vaccinated, you're exposed to the person sitting next to you, and she's positive, you have to go home for fourteen days?
You have to quarantine for fourteen days.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
All right. Um, I just have to, I'm a nurse, okay? I've been working since the first day of the pandemic. If I'm exposed, I'm self-monitoring. I go to work. I take care of healthy people, okay? I go to work. It hasn't been a problem this whole time. We have not had any issues. We self-monitor. We do a screening in the morning before we go to work. And, and it's worked. So if somebody's staying home fourteen days, it's a very, it's, it's not really effective. You know, that person is valuable in the school. The students need them. So how can you not just go over? And how do you effectively appeal that quarantine?
So there's, there's different requirements for different people. From what I am told, you, working in the healthcare industry, obviously cannot use the same protocols as anyone else from the public. Because if everyone who worked in a hospital had to quarantine for fourteen days during a pandemic for every, every time they came in contact with someone who carried a viral disease, there would be no one left to work in the hospitals.
That's correct. But, that is correct.
However, us...
But it's worked.
I'm not saying it hasn't worked.
We didn't have a problem. We didn't have super spreaders. We didn't have a problem. We were not, our staff was fine. We had, you know, I had many exposures. I was fine. And so it worked. It worked. So it doesn't, it, it, actually, we were the leaders. We showed you what works and what doesn't work. It worked. We didn't have a problem.
Okay, so at your, at your place of employment, who determines for you what you do as the protocols for quarantine?
I'm sorry?
At your place of employment, who determines for you what your protocols are for quarantine after exposure?
I would think the employee health committee.
So someone in a leadership position within your healthcare field or directly in your home? So in the rest of us in the lay areas, including schools, we get our directives from the Department of Health.
Okay.
So they provide the information. If you're able to convince them otherwise, and we don't have to do that, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, because I think that it would really be beneficial to the students that their teachers are there and not always missing fourteen days. Because we're going to have a school year.
Well, we do have a lot of vaccinated teachers, and going forward, we may have more. So that would, again, alleviate that concern in which we are discussing right now. But just for the clarity from Mr. Parton, is anything that I'm saying, this is mandatory information as it comes from the Department of Health. This is not an optional situation as we pick the days for quarantine within our school district.
That's correct. The Department of Health is determining for all school districts based on the orange, yellow, red, green. Here are your protocols based upon your county. There is no viable means for appeal. There is a completely different set of rules for people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated right now. We are subject to their guidance and their directives. If it changes, certainly, as Mr. Sittidino said, we've had changes within 24 hours. We may have changes within the next 24 hours. But we are bound by those right now.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Mrs. DeCaro, I have a number of emails that I received. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, anybody that wants to s- No, no, no. Anybody that wants to speak, you don't have to wait, you know, whatever. You can just come on up and form a line. You know, because, yeah.
I just want to point out, first of all, I can't really hear you with your mask on, and you have a microphone. And I do work in schools, and I do have a five-year-old who works one-on-one, and she doesn't have an IP. She doesn't need one yet. I work with children that age, and they do lose their focus. It's natural. It's normal. Who knows if she'll have maybe some other diagnosis later, or maybe not. Too early to tell. But she, she is not going to be able to hear the teacher with the mask on, talking in front of the class. I already know she's not going to learn as well. I already know half the class probably won't. Maybe a couple of kids will. You know, I mean, what do you plan to do about that? She's never been in a class of twenty-something kids. She's, you know, she's, I mean, she's already crying every day. She has to wear a mask. She doesn't want to go to school. But she also, even when you work one-on-one, I work one-on-one with that age group. How do we, I have to, they can't hear me. I can't hear them. I go to the supermarket. I can't, sometimes I don't, maybe I hear bits and pieces. I can figure it out because I'm an adult. They're learning phonics. They, she has trouble with letter and number recognition. I have her working with OTs at my work, you know, with the students, and she loses her attention one-on-one. I have that with my kids I work with, okay? It happens with all kids this age. It happens with kindergarten, preschool, kindergarten, first grade, second grade. The teachers, kids have to read mouths, lips. They have to hear the phonics. This makes a big difference when I do that, as opposed to this right now, do you see? And imagine that. It's easy for you because we can kind of figure it out, you know, as adults, what you're getting at. But I have to really like, listen, I stand in the back of the classroom sometimes and pretend I'm a student this past year in the schools that I've been at in person, and pretend I'm there. I sometimes get a little closer. And I, it takes a lot out of me to figure out, you know, sometimes it's like, wait a minute, hold on. This is, this isn't going to work. I do not want my child's IQ, it's been proven that children's IQ is actually lower since the pandemic, okay? Because now, you're, how are you going to work with this? Teachers should be able to speak to their class, especially at that age, you know? And they should be able to talk back, and they should be able to, to answer. I had some teachers tell me, I have no idea what this child's saying all year. I had no idea what this child was saying. You know? How about, how about those kids that are, now have complexes with the mask? Because they come crying to me, crying towards the end of the year. They wore it all year. You guys were cool tough the year. I get that. But where I was at, they were open all year, crying with anxiety. You have no idea how bad it was. No idea. The last two weeks of school, they didn't have to wear a mask. It was like night and day. Oh, my God, I didn't have to repeat things. It was crazy, you know? So now what? Well, how are, how are these kids going to learn? These younger kids, you know, going to learn? This isn't fair to them, you know? Also, they learn on emotions. I've never seen a speech therapist, I'm going to be honest with you. I've never seen a speech therapist not take off a mask for a kid in a session even though they're not supposed to. I've got no idea. So, never. Can't do it, you know? So, I mean, how? They're learning this speech. They're learning language. They're learning how to say things properly, how to sound words out, you know? So how are you going to, how are you going to accommodate for this, you know? Because what if they fall behind because of this? Because a lot of them probably will.
No, I will, I will provide you this. This, for the most part, is a just comment period. I write down all the questions, and I answer them at the end, any, any commentary that I have.
So are you, is, did you get all your questions out? I want to make sure that you said everything that you wanted to say.
I've said it, but I want to know how you're going to accommodate for this for these students.
Mr. Sitt, yeah, Mr. Sittidino is going to respond. I just want to make sure that everybody is, it doesn't look like anyone else is being hurt. So you can have, if you'd like to take a seat, we'll close the hearing of the residents, and Mr. Sittidino will address your questions. Okay? So see, oh, we, we do have one more. Okay.
Hello, I'm LaGuardia.
So, I'm sorry, just before you start, I just want to reiterate, I just want to reiterate that, you know, we, we did go a little bit with the back and forth with the first speaker, but this is not a Q and A, so if you have something to say, get all your questions out. Mr. Sittidino is writing everything down, and he will respond to everything, okay? Okay, go ahead. Continue. I'm sorry.
I appreciate the mask mandate. I have a immunocompromised family member, so I don't have a problem with that. Answering to the lady before me, perhaps teachers can be absolutely with microphones, just in case there are people in the back of the room, just a suggestion. My question has to do with the quarantine period. Over that fourteen days, will there be a remote option for kids who have COVID but aren't experiencing symptoms and still are able to learn?
We're in the process of, it's not just us, throughout the county, the state, different plans have been submitted to the state for what constitutes remote learning. So that information, I'll get back to you. It, it's going to come out prior to school starting.
Okay. And will we have a say in what constitutes online learning at that point, or not?
I will get back to you.
And the final thing about contact tracing, since I mentioned just a second ago that I have immunocompromised family members living in-house, if there's someone in the classroom with the student that has been diagnosed with COVID, would that be an instance of an exception for contact tracing, for example? And you can get back to me on that.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kate, so thank you for mandating the masks. Much, much appreciated. And I, and I'm sitting back there. I can clearly hear you, so thank you for that as well. My question is, for the bus, is it possible to hire like an assistant to make sure that, you know, to enforce, to make sure that kids are wearing masks? Because I know the bus driver is busy, you know, driving, and so they might have the opportunity to look back. Is it possible to hire like a, someone to assist them, to make sure kids aren't wearing masks?
Say all your comments, and then we're going to have a response.
Yeah, that was it. I just want to say thank you for mandating masks.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Serge Lehends. I just wanted to bring up the point about the governor's executive order 251. On page four, he did say this, I'm, I'm reading this quickly right now. "All public, private, and pre-school programs in elementary and secondary schools, including charter and Renaissance schools, must maintain a policy regarding mandatory use of face masks by staff, students, and visitors in the indoor portions of the school district premises, except in the following circumstances." Now, there's an A, B, but I just want to go right to C. "When a student's documented medical condition or disability as reflected in an individual education program, an IUP, or an educational plan pursuant to Section 504 of the Relentance Act of 1973, precludes use of a face mask." I just want to know, are we going to execute this plan, execute this from the governor throughout our district, that's all, for the IUPs? For kids with IUPs?
Hi, my name is Yvette Christian, and my son goes to Olbridge. He'll be in middle school this year. And I just want to thank you for the mask mandate because he is also medically compromised. And although it is really difficult for him to wear a mask, we have been working with him to wear a mask. And he's been out of school since March 2020. And I am, I will be very happy to have him go back in person. And knowing that the mask mandate is in place makes me feel a lot better. And I thank you, Teresa. I thank you, President DeCaro, and I thank you, Jill Carle, Colley. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just, let's try to maintain dignity out there in the audience. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do I see anyone else? Is it, yes, okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Close now. Hi, my name is Roxanna Costa Hernandez, and I am an Olbridge parent. I have a son who's starting second grade this fall. For first grade, last year, he was able to go back in person when schools reopened in May, wearing his mask. And once he went back, I saw him start to thrive again, to flourish, to get back and see a few of his friends that were able to go back as well. Today I'm here, I'm speaking to you as a mom of a school-aged son and a mom of a preschool, a son in preschool, who are not able to get vaccinated at the moment because they don't meet the age requirement. Instead of spending the time and energy debating about masks, I want us to really start focusing on talking about topics that will improve our children's education and how we're going to make this school year as successful as possible for them. From the survey results that we heard about in the last meeting, 1,627 parents who responded. Out of those of that number, 61% were for masks. 70% of staff were for masks. I would say the majority of us here, as parents and educators, we don't want to go back to last year. We don't want to see our kids struggling and us struggling, trying to juggle work and helping them with virtual learning. That's not where we want to go back to. We want to make sure that we can do everything possible and take every precaution possible to give them a safe, successful school year, a semi-normal school year. As I listened to last week's board meeting, some board members expressed that masks should be a parent or child's choice. I disagree. I am not a doctor or a health professional, so when my children get sick, I take them to the doctor and I follow the pediatrician's advice. I don't go ahead and diagnose them myself. The consensus within the medical community is pretty clear that masks are effective, and one of the tools that we can use to reduce the transmission of an airborne virus, the choices that we make in the middle of a pandemic do not just impact you or your child, or just yourself. The point I'm trying to make is not just about you. It's about us as a community and the choices that we make. Yes, the data shows that children have very low chances of getting very sick from COVID. That's what we've seen so far. But the fact remains that there's still that chance that your neighbor, your child's friend, classmate, neighbor can still get really sick from it. Are you really willing to take that risk, knowing that there's that chance still? So I want us to move on already. I'm talking about masks.
Excuse me, Ms. Hernandez, one second. If you can just hold on one second. Me up here. I just want to remind the audience, I remind, this is my second time I'm reminding you, we will not be heckling the people speaking at the podium. If I hear it again, I will ask for you to be removed, okay? Let's just be clear.
You'll get your chance to speak. You will get your chance. Allow me to say my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Hernandez, you may continue.
So I want us to move on already from talking about masks. I want to focus on what my child's school year is going to look like. How are we going to help students catch up from last year's learning loss? What is lunch and recess going to look like for them? What is the backup plan in case we're stuck with schools shutting down again? We should really be talking about that. What is the budget situation looking like in Olbridge School District? That has not really come up in any means I've seen. How are we going to work together to resolve these issues? That is, I think, what we should be spending our energy on right now. Thank you.
My name is Mike Payne. I was a sophomore, a student starting a sophomore year in the high school. I have a little bit of a pair of, uh, tawkes. But I want to start by saying that no one wants to have their child have to wear a mask to school. While I don't believe there's anything physical, there's going to happen to them physically, I can see how it could mentally affect them, certainly. But along those lines, I know it's going to deserve some children, and they're going to be anxiety-filled when they go to school wearing a mask because they want to protect themselves and others. And they see other kids coming to the school, and they're not wearing their mask. So let's not have a double standard here, first of all. All right? All kids are all going to be anxious, whether they're wearing the mask or are not all wearing the mask. That's just the reality of the pandemic. That's just part of it, that we all are living in right now, not by choice. So I just want to get that out of the way. This happened to me last Friday. I went to a concert at a sold-out venue, a stadium in Philadelphia. Me, I, while listening to the show, I chose not to wear a mask. I was outside, I felt comfortable. I didn't feel overcrowded. When the show was over and everybody was leaving, the crowd, it was crowded. I had to wait in line just to go up the stairs. I had to go indoors to get, just to be able to get out. Me and my son, we chose to wear masks. While we were walking on our way out, some guy walking the other direction came up to me close and said very loudly and obnoxiously, "You're wearing a mask. Close your eyes." That is very disturbing to me. I really wanted to turn to him and say, "I work at a hospital. Maybe I'll see you there." Or, "I work at a hospital. We have plenty of ventilators for you right now." You know? So, but I didn't because I was with my children, and that was just not the right thing to do. But you know what? He was definitely there mask shaving me because I chose and my son chose to wear a mask. And I realized it actually the opposite effect. I was actually proud that me and my son chose to wear a mask to protect ourselves and even to protect that gentleman, why am I calling gentleman? I don't even know, but that guy who came over to mask shave me. I was even protecting him, and I was proud of it. And that's really what I want to talk about. I was proud of it because we were protecting ourselves, we were protecting our families, we were protecting our community, we were protecting our country. And that's why I felt proud. And that's what I want to talk about. This is about civic responsibility here. This is about personal responsibility and being, doing what's best for everybody, not just what might be just for yourself. I must say, um, that's really, so I wanted to, the reason I'm here, because I heard, and I don't know, I'm glad to hear that we're going to follow the mask mandate. But I had heard that there was a vote last week in which five board members voted that they did not want to have the mask mandate and four voted that they were in favor of the mask mandate. I wasn't here last week, but that really disturbed me, actually surprised me that that could happen. And it disappointed me that that could be, that could actually happen. I work in the medical field, and I know masks work. When I enter a room-
Do I need, I'm sorry, excuse me, sir. Do I need to have you removed, sir? Officer? Officer, please. Officer. Officer, please.
Okay? You want to go, go to the COVID floor without a mask and see what happens?
Sir.
Thank you.
Everybody has their turn at the microphone.
All right.
Let him speak.
All right, sir. Continue. All right. Officer, please.
Let him speak. If you want to speak, you can come to the microphone next.
Masks work. I'll wait till you leave.
I apologize, sir.
I'm Jewish. Please leave.
All right. People, people, we are adults here, all right? We all need to respect the people that are speaking at the podium. You all have five minutes.
And anybody at the podium, your, your goal is to speak to the board, not to the public, please. Thank you.
And that's what this talk is really for. I got this, I'm sorry. I want to say is that masks do work. When I enter a room with a patient with tuberculosis, I have to wear personal protective equip, uh, gear to make sure that I don't catch it. And it works. When I have to go into a room with a patient with C. diff, I have to wear a mask every time I'm in there because if I don't, there's a serious risk that I can catch that infection. Masks work. And not only is it important for me, for my own safety, but when I go in there, I better gown up, wear my mask, will do whatever I need to do. And then when I leave, I better wash my hands, take that gown off, put on a new mask because I might be going to, I won't, I will be going to another patient's room afterwards. And if I don't take the proper precautions, they can catch that disease for me. And that would be completely irresponsible on my part to do that. And that is why I really do believe masks do work.
Okay, sir. I'm sorry. It's been five minutes.
But I lost five minutes from.
We, we stopped it during that.
Oh, okay. So long story short is that I'm glad we are-
You can finish up. Yeah.
I'm glad that we are doing the masks. It was less than five minutes before I got nervous and then got interrupted, but, uh,
There is a, I'll give you, I'll give you one more sentence.
All right. Can I read my last paragraph?
No, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
You know what? There's another session at the end.
Yeah. You can speak again at the end.
You can speak again at the end. Only one, you only get to speak one time for five minutes per session.
I just want people to realize that the reason that color changed is because things are getting worse here.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Things are getting worse.
Thank you.
And we need to do whatever we need to do to make sure we don't end up back where we were before.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ma'am, you spoke already. I'm sorry, we have someone else online and- Okay. We have someone else and you can speak again at the end.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I wanted to say thank you so much to the Board of Education. I don't think it was probably a very easy year for you guys. So what you're doing in keeping children safe, I commend you. I just wanted to speak, there was a woman who spoke here earlier who said that, you know, children might not be susceptible to COVID. They're probably the least likely to get affected. That's not the case for my son. He's two years old and he had a routine surgery for a kidney issue. This was something that within three days, I was told, it's just hard the first three days of surgery. He's going to get past it, you know, just a normal, regular routine surgery. He'll be fine, you know, it's just the pain medications. Two weeks later, we're still in the hospital. They don't know what's wrong with him. We had to go to CHOP. He had inflammation in his earders, even though his surgery was to correct them. Inflammation is a post-COVID symptom. I wish that I was more careful. I let one person in my home, my sister, who was sick. And I have so much guilt that I hope that you parents don't have to ever feel. It's, it just kills me that I couldn't have protected him. And somebody sees people, you know, you know, fighting so hard for their child to have the right to get sick. It's sickening to me. It's sickening to me. It's disgusting. A parent's job is to keep their child safe no matter what. When they are sick, you give them medicine. You get them soup. When it's cold outside, you give them a jacket. Everyone says that they want their child to go back to normal. Dealing with COVID, it's not normal. When I'm admitted to Robert Wood Johnson, they put, "My child's room, welcome back, Colin, from all the complications that he's had to deal with. He is back again and again." I have a suitcase packed in my room because I never know if it's going to be a normal week or if we're going to spend another two months at the hospital. It's sickening to me. Your child could be a statistic. Don't you think that if there was one little step, if you were told you could do one little thing to protect, to prevent them from getting sick, that you would do it? Because as a parent, that's what our job is to do, to protect our children. Wouldn't you take that one step? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Parton said you do have about a minute, a minute left on your time, so.
That's fine. Um, I just want to, being that I only have the one minute, okay? I'm sorry for anybody who's lost somebody with COVID. There is our treatment, okay? Early in this stage, and you will be told that there is no treatment, but there is. If you can find Dr. Peter McCullough's interviews online, he has a protocol for COVID. So it's for, you know, before you get really sick and, and he actually keeps his patients out of the hospital. But I want to ask everybody in this room, how many of you have read the package insert for the loop masks that some of you have on in here right now? How many have read it? Okay. The warning, okay? The warning on the mask is it will not provide any protection against COVID-19 coronavirus or other viruses or contaminants. Wearing an ear loop mask does not reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection. And in its single use only. Has anybody read that? And that is the package insert for the masks that you're wearing to prevent COVID. So you're being, unfortunately, I can't blame any of you who want to wear a mask, but it's like putting a fence up to keep the marbles out, to keep the sand from getting in. It's really just a sense of, it's a false sense of security. And it's really causing you to be-
Okay, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we are going to, seeing no one else speak, is standing up to speak. I am going to close the hearing of the residents portion. Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot. We did get some emails, I believe.
Uh, yes, we received a number of-
I just want you to procedurally be, be closing the, for residents to come up and now just having the reading. So we're not going to have residents come up to respond to the reading.
Yes.
Correct.
And then you'll respond after everything. Okay.
Okay. So the first email that I received today was from Janie Powell. I'll do my best that everyone can hear me. It's addressed, "Dear Mr. Solakowski, I am writing to you in reference to your comments on the BOE Agenda Meeting of 8/17. I am writing as both a parent slash guardian of a child in OBTPS system as well as an elementary educator in the district. Last Tuesday, I was watching the agenda meeting with my 10-year-old granddaughter of whom I have legal custody. Your comments made at the 1:02 mark of the meeting particularly disturbed me as a parent and a guardian. In your comments, you stated that your granddaughter, who is a student in the district, did not understand why she was required to wear a mask if she was vaccinated. You further went on to tell members of the board and the audience that she refuses to wear the mask and that they, they're going to have to lock her up and she's only 11 years old. Almost immediately, my granddaughter told me she was not going to wear a mask because if your granddaughter wasn't going to, neither was she. Later that night, I was perbed with concerns that she would be locked up if she refused to wear her mask. As a rational parent slash guardian, I explained to her that she would not be locked up, but she would indeed be wearing her mask at school as was required. It is not up to her to decide that because she is a child and I am her guardian. Case closed. Please remember that as an adult, you are acting as a role model for everyone who hears you speak at a meeting, not just adults. There are lots of things my granddaughter does not want to do, but at the end of the day, it is my job to ensure that she does indeed do them. As an educator in the district, I was thrilled to see government, the governor's order be put in place. I was happy that the BOE would not have to spend the time debating the mask issue and can move on to more important topics. Thanks to Mr. Dunn, Mr. Giordano, Mr. Weber, and yourself stirring the pot about an issue that has been taken out of the individual district hands, I will now have to worry about a stronger backlash from anti-mask parents in addition to bridging the learning gap loss of my up and coming third graders, keeping them socially distanced, and ensuring that the practice, that they practice proper hygiene to quell the spread of germs. Additionally, I get the anxiety, the added anxiety that comes from having a student test positive with the new Delta variant of COVID and being asked to teach either the whole class or a group of quarantined students in a hybrid format, of which I will be given a moment's notice to prepare for. Finally, please take the time to read slash watch to learn more about what is happening in schools that do not require students to wear masks. Both Mississippi and Florida do not have mask mandates. To be transparent, their vaccine numbers are lower than that of New Jersey, but this information shows that the spread of COVID is happening amongst unmasked students. Remember, these students have been back to school for a very short time, and I'm sure there will be many more additional scenarios prior to the beginning of our school year on September 9th. There is a link to a website here, which I'm not going to go into, but to continue, thank you for hearing me out. I have the utmost respect for yourself and other members of the, of the BOE during this tumultuous time, but I feel that all members of the school community should be masked up until such a time when the numbers subside and the majority of our school community is vaccinated. Respectfully yours, Janie Powell. So, Mr. Parton, if I exceed five minutes, you'll stop me?
Yeah, I'm running the timer on you.
Okay. So second one. All right. The second one is from Michelle Codaro. Michelle Codaro. Apology if I'm mispronouncing that. "Good evening. My name is Ms., my name is Michelle Codaro, and I am a new resident to Old Bridge and the mother of two young, school-aged children. I am also a licensed psychotherapist in both the states of New Jersey and New York. Over the last year and a half, I've had, I've had a view of COVID, many others have not. I have seen it and its impact on people at a level of intimacy that only a therapy session can hold. I have and continue to work with parents, teachers, school administrators, adolescents, as well as others in my practice, and I have heard desperation and frustration on both sides of the mask debate. But there is one common theme among all my patients, that they want the pandemic to end. When a patient comes to me and asks my opinion on masks or the vaccine, I do share my views, but it is not my role to sway theirs. When they seek guidance, I always encourage them to review the research and science and avoid all politics surrounding the issue. I think this is where our biggest problem as a society lies. All COVIDs, all things COVID-19 have been pressed so drastically in the media and the political world that we have foregone the science. Average individuals are willing to debate with virologists, epidemiologists, and frontline treating medical professionals. A number of years ago, smoking was no longer allowed in restaurants and then expanded to most other venues. It frustrated so many smokers, but there was some sense of rationalization that if a smoker is harming others by smoking around them, it would definitely be unhealthy, unfair, and also un-American to do it. People, although frustrated, accepted this as a right, as the right thing to do. They followed the science. We cannot see the spread of COVID like we can see the smoke of a cigarette. Children have the right to be in public while not inhaling secondhand smoke, as well as having the right to attend school without inhaling a potentially deadly virus. This is their right. While I am for freedom and choices and tend to encourage people to stand up for their beliefs, this has just gone too far. As humans, we have an ethical and moral responsibility to care for one another, to protect each other, and to prevent harm to one another. If the bottom line is that we all have the common goal of the pandemic, of the pandemic ending, then why is this such a complicated concept? As a parent, I have the right to know that my child is safe in school. As a professional, I also have the credentials to say that if this pandemic does not slow down, the mental health of our community will continue to diminish rapidly. Without stable mental health, our children will not flourish. Myself and my colleagues are spread so thin, fully booked and having to turn people away. How will this impact us? We have not even begun to see the PTSD that will result from this pandemic. The longer it lingers, the worse it will become. We can easily come to an agreement of self-sacrifice and concern for one another. Put politics aside and just be humanitarian, just be American, so we can finally end this pandemic and begin to heal. In addition, I will be sure to take the board member's position on humanity and ethics into consideration when I cast my vote in November. Signed, Michelle Codaro, LCSW-R. The next email is from Stephanie Babbitts. "Good morning. I am reaching out to you to express my dismay at behavior exhibited at Tuesday's BOE Agenda Meeting on the part of some of the board BOE members in what appeared to be nothing more than-" more than grandstanding and pandering for support from parents who have locked onto misinformation. You displayed a complete regard, you displayed a complete regard for health and safety of all the children in our district. I am sure the majority of people were disappointed to hear the announcement of the mask mandate, but this is a situation we, we have been dealt. As I teach my children, we make the most of, out of a situation and move forward in the best possible way. What I saw the other night was reprehensible and clearly not a representation of the people I want representing all the children in Old Bridge Township Public Schools. I am an active parent, dash, not someone who appeared on the scene in the last few months with an axe to grind. I have attended BOE meetings consistently since my son came into the district in 2013. What I have seen in the last several months from BOE members has fueled the divisiveness that has permeated our town and sadly, our country. I am frustrated by BOE members who continually and consistently vote down every agenda item and take issue with topics that quite frankly, are not within our control. Per NJSBA, board members are nonpartisan. The board member serves a dual role, to represent the concerns of the citizens, taxpayers, and parents to the school administrators, and to represent the needs of the students and the school district to the citizens, taxpayers, and parents and of the community. The other is the school board sets policies, goals, and objectives for the district. Have you reviewed the data, the survey, or spoke directly to parents to ask why their, what their concerns are? Your pontificating tangents about the dictator in Trenton, reference to the Stamp Act from the 1700s, statements from Fauci emails, was a distraction from the big picture. Parents want their children returning to school in a safe environment. Health and safety for children and staff is a critical, is critical if we want to ensure our children are in the building five full days. Additionally, we want our children educated and have their social and emotional needs met through social interaction with peers. This mark, this mask issue is utterly ridiculous, myopic, and has no place in a conversation that should be focused on setting policies, goals, and objectives for the district. Mr. Sidedino speaks proudly of Old Bridge being a district of character, but I have not seen that exhibited from some members over the past several months. Perhaps you should take a moment to reevaluate why you chose to run for the Board of Education and assess if you are truly upholding the oath you took and if you are adhering to the code of ethics. I thank the BOE members, Jill Calley, Jill DeCaro, Teresa Burns, and Kelly Ellis Foster, who spoke from a place of logic and reason. To the rest, please do better. Regards, Stephanie Babbitts." The next email is from Debbie Finnegan. "Hello, I would greatly, I would be grateful if you would kindly arrange to read the following comments from, from me at the Board of Education meeting on Tuesday. I've heard that there will be two comment periods if possible. I would like to, my comments to be read in the earlier portion before any voting takes place. Thank you. Debbie Freeman, 40, Thomas Street, Old Bridge, New Jersey, 08857. Thank you for reading my comments. I am sorry I couldn't be at the meeting tonight. I'm a nurse at JFK, and I had to be at work. My son will be starting kindergarten this fall. I watched last week's meeting, and I have some concerns regarding the board's dedication to the public health measures in our schools. I would like to encourage the members of the board to vote no on Mr. Dunn's proposal to send a letter to the state in protest of the universal mask mandate. The district survey results show that the majority of the parents and the staff are in favor of the universal wearing of masks in our schools. To send a letter in protest of the statewide school mask mandate would therefore misrepresent the views of this community. I would encourage the board to respect the views of the majority of parents and staff. We want everyone in the schools to be safe, and according to the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, universal masking is a necessary safety measure in light of the highly infectious Delta variant. Last week, you heard from some very loud and very aggressive people who do not believe that we should listen to the AAP and the CDC. Some of them even admitted that they had no expertise in epidemiology or medicine, yet they were asking you to ignore the advice of pediatricians and epidemiologists who have devoted their lives to studying medicine and public health. As a nurse in a hospital that overflowed with COVID patients in the first and second waves of the pandemic, I am too familiar with this virus, but I am not going to try to persuade you based on my personal experiences caring for COVID patients. I don't have to because there are three very clear reasons for you to vote no to Mr. Dunn's proposed letter. One, the majority of parents and staff are in favor of the universal masking in our schools. Two, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends universal masking in schools. And three, the CDC recommends universal masking in schools. There is no good reason to send this letter other than appeasing a, a very loud, local, aggressive minority of people who believe we should ignore science. I am writing to remind you that as evidenced by the survey, for every person who is screaming at you to remove the masks, there are at least two other people who quietly and calmly support the wearing of masks in our schools and want you to do the right thing for our kids and teachers. Thank you." Okay, so the, I believe this is the last one. It's from Samantha Caridi, C-A-R-I-D-I. "Since, when, since when do everyday citizens insist that they know better than doctors? Since when do everyday citizens insist that they are more informed than scientists? Since when do people claiming they have done research stand on a hill and claim they know better than the researchers? As someone who has a degree in human biology, I can tell you that watching YouTube videos, reading memes, and handpicking the data you want to believe in is not research. I've been following the actual research throughout this entire pandemic, not just the stuff I want to hear, but all of it. Because science isn't about trying until you get the answer you want, that is confirmation bias. Science is about wanting something to be true, testing it, and then accepting the results that are given to you. People can cite emails they have read and random doctors who make speeches, but unless you are citing actual, published, peer-reviewed articles, you are uninformed. So let's look at the scientific data. Article entitled, "An Evidence Review of Face Masks Against COVID-19. The preponderance of evidence indicates that mask-wearing reduces transmissibility per contact by reducing transmission of infected respiratory particles in both laboratory and clinical contexts. Public masks wearing, public mask-wearing is most effective at reducing the spread of the virus when compliance is high. Center for Disease Control, masks are primarily intended to reduce the emission of virus-laden droplets, in parentheses, source control, which is especially relevant for asymptomatic or presymptomatic infected wearers who feel well and may be aware of their infectiousness to others and who are estimated to account for more than 50% of the transmissions. In an article entitled, "Efficacy of Face Masks, Neck Gaiters, and Face Yields for Reducing the Expulsion of Simulated Cough-Generated Aerosols," the author stated, "One of the primary benefits of face masks and other coverings is a source-controlled device to reduce the expulsion of respiratory aerosols during coughing, breathing, and speaking." It goes on further to state, "Source-controlled devices are intended to protect other people from infectious aerosols emitted by the wearer, as compared with personal protective equipment such as N95 respirators, which are primarily intended to protect the wearer." I could go on for days with scientific articles about the efficacy of masks, but in the interest of saving time, I will leave it at that and have attached a list compiled by an epidemiologist of 70 various peer-reviewed scientific articles regarding the safety and efficacy of masks. In short, the translation is masks are effective, there is no evidence of harm, and it is more important for the infected person to wear masks than it is necessary for protection, which in addition for liability purposes, why the boxes of masks state that they won't prevent you from getting sick. Therefore, my child wears a mask to protect your child, and your child does the same to protect mine, which is why the universal masking is the only way to prevent the spread. If I sent, if I send my masked child in a room with 30, sorry, with 30 unmasked people, my child's mask will not be enough for protection. I wish it was, then I would just ask my child and go about my life. But if your child is infected and not wearing a mask, that is putting my child at risk. And how can you claim it's your right to make decisions that put my child at risk? The consensus of experts is clear. The American Academy of Pediatrics has stated, "In addition to vaccinations, the AAP recommends a layered approach to make schools safe for all students, teachers, and staff. This includes a recommendation that everyone older than the age of two wear masks regardless of vaccination status. And the CDC has stated, 'Due to the circulating and high contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all students.'" Both agree. Now onto the opinion portion of the speech. "Nobody likes to wear masks, nobody enjoys wearing masks, some people enjoy the protection that it provides, but nobody enjoys the act of wearing masks. It's not necessarily the most comfortable thing. You know what else isn't comfortable? Seat belts. If you get a seatbelt ticket, are you going to court and scream that it is your right not to wear a seatbelt? No, you accept the government puts forth rules and regulations to ensure your safety of, of the safety of its citizens." My, good? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Samantha Caridi.
Okay, so you're all done?
No, no.
Oh, there's more?
Sorry, yes, sorry.
Okay.
I thought I was done, but there is...
Okay, one more.
No, there are three more.
Okay.
This email is from Caitlin E-F. "Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Caitlin, I am an Old Bridge alumni and college graduate with a degree in public health. It has been frustrating to watch public, it has been frustrating to watch a public health issue get politicized by members of the Board of Education. By doing so, it has created unneeded chaos instead of addressing issues that impact students and their education. I have deduct, I have deducted from the last Board of Education meeting that providing facts on mask-wearing is not productive, as not everyone is receptive to this type of information. Instead, since you feel compelled to bring up the topic of mask-wearing, I would like to bring up a public health topic the district is familiar with to compare how situations have been handled. According to foodallergy.org, 32 million Americans have food allergies, with the most common being tree nuts and peanuts. That being said, throughout my 13 years in Old Bridge School, this Old Bridge School District, were discouraged from bringing peanut products to school to ensure the safety of their fellow students. Even as an elementary student, I understood that by complying with these standards, I was keeping my classmates safe. At the time, I was young and did not understand all the logistics, but because I was in school, that emphasized the pillars of character, I wanted to act in a caring and respectful way towards my peers. Even if it meant I couldn't bring a peanut butter and jelly sandwich to school, I was willing to compromise for the safety of the people around me. Masks are similar in the sense of, of if students can ensure the safety of people around them, what is stopping them? The mild inconvenience of wearing a mask? Are you a parent stopping them because you choose to hold political beliefs over safety? If outside of a school setting, parents and students chose not to wear masks, then that there is their prerogative, just like you can eat peanut butter in your own home if you choose to. All I ask is that everyone reflects and thinks backs, and thinks back on the pillars of character as we pride ourselves on being a district of character. Are you addressing issues being caring, respectful, trustworthy, responsible, fair, and with citizenship? I hope going forward, the adults in the district can act as role models for the future of this town and act with respect, no matter what side of the issue they are on." The next one is from Jenna Lyons. "Hello, I am not, I am unable to attend the board meeting, but I wanted to be sure that my feelings as a community member and parent were on record. My children will be in elementary school this year. It is imperative that children who do not have the opportunity to be vaccinated continue to be protected, and the best way to do that right now, based on science, is to continue masking them. They need to be in school consistently. We can't be shutting down every few weeks or quarantining whole classrooms because we don't require masks. I have friends in the South whose kids were home from school as close contacts within a week of school start, starting because there were no mask mandates. We cannot make the same mistake. This is a simple solution that will enable our children to be in school all day, not on a computer or in and out of the classroom. This protects staff members, the other children, the family members, and the babysitters who may be medically compromised and are unable to vaccinate. It is the least we can do. The kids are fine wearing masks. I'm an educator, and I can tell you firsthand that kids don't care. To condemn mask-wearing is to forget the most basic principle of humanity, which is to care for others the way you would want to be cared for. We pride ourselves in our character education in Old Bridge. What kind of character we'll be teaching our children if we can't teach them to look out for others? Citizenship, caring, and responsibility are three of the six pillars of character education, and I'm fairly certain that any elementary student could tell you that wearing masks checks all of these boxes. Thank you for your time, Jenna Alice, 11 Elaine Street, Old Bridge, New Jersey." And the last one is from Christopher Finnegan. "Dear members of the Board of Education, my name is Chris Finnegan, and I am an Old Bridge resident as well as a parent of an Old Bridge Public School student. I am writing to you to implore you to protect the health of our children and our families by supporting universal masking in our schools, as stipulated in Executive Order 251. I will admit that, like all of you, I am not an expert in epidemiology, virology, or pediatric medicine. However, the more than 70,000 pediatricians that compromise, that comprise the American, the American Academy of Pediatrics are indeed experts in their field. Likewise, so are the viralists and epidemiologists of the Center for Disease Control. They are both calling for masking students and staff in schools to protect our children, our staff, their families, and relatives. After such a tumultuous year and a half, why would we not be doing everything in our power to enable in-person instruction, to recommence uninterrupted? Why would we ignore the advice of experts? The recent parent and staff survey suggests majority of stakeholders want to adhere to specific guidelines and employ masking in our schools. If you are not advocating for the advice of experts or the will of the people, you will have been, I'm sorry, if you are not advocating for the advice of experts or the will of the people you have been elected to serve, then where does your imperative to act so foolishly on this issue come from? This is neither the time nor the place for politics or vitriol. It is a time to come together and protect some of the most vulnerable members of our society. If you cannot use your powers to come together and protect some of the, no, if you cannot use your powers to complete the most fundamental task that has been entrusted to you through your elected position, then you will have to be, you have betrayed the public trust and brought shame upon yourselves and your office. If the experts are somehow wrong, we will have forced our children to suffer a minor inconvenience without benefit. If you are, if you are wrong, schools could be forced to, to go remote again. Students and staff will face disruptions due to having to quarantine. At worst, parents could unnecessarily lose a child, as what happened to over 400 American families already. Children could unnecessarily lose a parent, sibling, or grandparent. What will you say to those grieving families? Will petty political grandstanding prove to have been worth the price? I hope and pray you will make the wise decision to do everything in your power to keep our children and staff and families safe. Sincerely, Chris Finnegan." Sincerely, Chris Finnegan."
Okay, was that, you all done? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mara. Okay, um, Mr. Sididino, I believe you had some questions to respond to?
Correct. There was one question related to mask impacting, the audio capability of understanding a teacher within the classroom. We do have the ability to have FM systems in the classroom, most elementary, many of the elementary classrooms already do come with them. What I would suggest is that, especially in the speech area in which one of the questions was brought up, I know that we have specialized masks that allows students to see the lips of their speech professional in that area. It's a mask with a clear window, it allows them to do the lip reading and read through the phonics understanding that the teachers are then providing. I will provide also that we were in school, in person, with students, not all of them, for seven months. We had no overwhelming response from parents or anyone saying that teachers could not be heard by students. It didn't happen. We had masks for the last year, for seven months. That wasn't an overwhelming concern. If it becomes one, we will address that at that time. But I am sure that our professionals can handle it and have the tools in their toolbox as teachers to make sure that students can hear them and understand them. Is the best scenario to wear a mask? No. Do I want to wear one right now? No. But that's the hand that we are dealt. The next question was, what plan constitutes learning in a situation where a student has to quarantine or is sick in quarantine, even COVID? So other plans that the county superintendents and curriculum committees have put together, they have situations where students who are forced to quarantine or are sick from COVID would be like any other situation where a student is sick, they would receive actually additional and better supports than most homeschooling situations. They would have asynchronous learning from their, from their teacher, the teacher, classroom teacher, who knows them best and has worked with them up until the point of quarantine, will provide them with the work and supports that they need, and then they will be assigned a teacher for their grade, specific grade and/or readiness from, for after school for up to two hours per day, for five days a week. And that'll be live through a remote setting that, so let's say all first graders who are quarantining will then work with that teacher who is going to review the work that was provided asynchronously through the classroom teacher. The, the best option in the catalog of options, obviously, is the room and Zoom that we did last year. It's best for the students and it's best, but it's, it's not the best delivery model. And at some point, we have to get to the point where COVID is treated like every other illness in that format of home instruction. So that a situation like, it becomes a very, I guess slippery slope. So a student who has the flu, the regular flu, or chickenpox, we would say if they're going to be home for beyond the five days, that they would get home instruction, which would traditionally just be a teacher working with them after school. But a student whose sibling went to a party at a university and came home with COVID, and they're now a close contact and they have to quarantine because they're not of age to get a vaccine, they're going to get a classroom with a teacher and a computer and right into the classroom. Similarly, a student who is, in our district, who is fighting leukemia, would have a home instruction model. A student who has to vac, has to quarantine because of a close contact with a family member gets to Zoom right into the classroom. It creates inequity and is not within the best model. So eventually, we have to get to the point where all students who are quarantining or are homesick get the same equity as far as a delivery model. So those are a few of the options that are being reviewed by the State Department of Education, submitted by our county superintendents and curriculum. The question about bus aides, additional bus aides, I know we've had a look at expanded bus aides, and transportation is always a challenge in getting transportation workers, including bus aides, but I know it's a topic that we're going to talk about soon through, through transportation and services to look at that as well. So when we have a transportation services meeting, we're going to be looking at expanding our, is it necessary to expand our, our bus aid fleet? Mr. Parton, there was a question in reference to one of the subsections of 251, where as a student can have an exemption to wearing a mask. I don't know if you want to feel questionable going to it. It relates to the IEP, what the process is to have it fulfilled through the IEP.
Uh, yeah, the, procedurally, the IEP or the 504 Plan of a medically fragile or educationally classified student, that process would be the same, dealing with an accommodation or special arrangement for that student as it has been always for any other special arrangement needed for a student. As far as the inability to wear a mask, actually, there's been some rumblings from school districts not far from here about whether you can waive out of that by a simple letter from a parent or even an attestation, as they call it, from the student, him or herself. Governor Murphy answered that question today concretely in Executive Order 253, and in that he said that you need to go through the process, or there needs to be, if this child is not a classified student or a 504 student, you need to provide medical documentation of why the student cannot medically wear a mask. An attestation from a parent, guardian, or the student, him or herself, is legally meaningless according to Executive Order 253. So the processes, under that exception to the masking requirement, are IEP, 504, or a doctor saying, "This child cannot wear a mask." Short of that, there are no exceptions on those bases.
And that doctor's exception also has to come with a diagnosis, I believe, correct?
Yes, a diagnosis and a prognosis, if it's long-term, if it's permanent, if it's temporary. It would be no different than, I guess the best analogy would be non-participation in gym class. A student with a doctor's note that says, "This child is suffering from this condition or this injury and cannot participate in gym until November 1st," that is a valid excuse. It would be something like that, and it would have to be specific and not a generalized recommendation from the doctor. The governor has been extremely clear about that, and again, Executive Orders 251 and 253, regardless of anyone's opinion of them, are under the force of law. So that is where we stand right now. As you said before, the answer may be somewhat different tomorrow, we don't know, but that is where we stand legally right now.
Right, and I just, I'm glad you clarified that, and that's why I brought it up about the need to have medical documentation with a diagnosis, because unrelated to COVID, my experience as a principal, superintendent, I've been presented with doctor's notes from, say, a family friend who happens to be a doctor, but just generally says that, "Your example is great, Christopher doesn't have partake in gym, signed, Dr. Marcus Welby." And when pressed as to why, doctors tend not to put that down. If they have to then put on a diagnosis that may be related to their insurance or anything else, they're less likely to put something down that is not accurate and false. I believe that addresses all of the information. I know that someone had made comment as to lower IQs during the pandemic. If you send me the research, I'd be glad to take a look at it.
Okay. Um, any board comments? If not, let's move on. We're going to go to policy, and we have resolutions one or two, one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie will move.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on policy? Okay, Mr. Mara?
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
On to curriculum and professional development. We have items one through 11. Can I have a motion, please?
Burns will make the motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Thank you. Any discussion on curriculum professional development? Mr. Mara?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No for one, yes for the rest.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11, pass.
Okay, I have now finance. I'm sorry? Athletics, I'm sorry, I missed athletics. Athletics, one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Who's that?
Me, Sal.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carroll, I missed those.
Mr. De Prima and Mr. Weber.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Mara, roll call, please.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one and two, pass.
Okay, now we're on finance. Items one through 16. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move finance, items one through 16, Madam President.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Ms. Callie, thank you. Any discussion on finance?
Yes, I'd like to separate 9413, which is page one of one, for the discussion, and on page three of seven, Jersey Central Power Online, 9970.
Okay. What number is that? I'm sorry, Mr. Silikowski?
Okay, 9413, that's page one of one.
Which, which?
You're both, you're talking about within item number one, the bill list, correct, Mr. Silikowski?
Yes, the bill list, right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So nine.
Item is page four of seven, I'm sorry, page three of seven, 9970, Jersey Central Power Online.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Would you like to discuss those two, I, well, we'll discuss 9413 first?
Yes.
And take a vote.
Okay, inline air conditioning, $43,182. Was this a replacement or, or it says?
It's required, it was required maintenance.
That much money for maintenance?
It was for the GNC. The HBA system and GNC is huge.
Is that for one unit or all the units?
No, it's multiple units.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, Jersey Central Power Online, 9970, that's page three of seven.
Should be voted on this first.
Why is the electric bill at the high school, $48,000?
The, the high school has a capacity, I, I don't know the square footage of the high school, but the high school has a capacity of 3,500 students, 300 teachers, I, it's not an unusual building.
Yeah, but it's summertime, summertime, and that's a lot of money.
Air conditioning, the air, we keep the air conditioning on all summer so that we don't have a mold issue throughout, throughout the building. We had a mold, we had, when we reduced the air conditioning three years ago, we wound up shutting a school down because of the mold for, we delayed opening school for almost 10 days.
Okay, my next.
So we keep the air conditions on during the summer to prevent further damage to the interiors of the classrooms.
And what is the temperature set at?
I can't answer that question. If you have a question that's specific, I wish you would ask me before the meeting and I could respond intelligently with that answer.
Okay, my, my next question, Madison Park, they had a bill of $351.45, and the other elementary schools had bills in the thousands. What's the difference over there?
I, I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Silikowski, if you email me, and then I can send that over to?
No, I mean, we have to pay the bills, but, you know, I'm just curious.
No, no, I know, but for your, for your information, yeah, no, 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 we have to vote on it tonight, but for your information, we could get that information from Mr. Mara another time.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
So roll call on number 9413.
Okay, so 9413, roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Silikowski?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Purchase order nine, or that's not the purchase, no, I'll just call it 9413 passes.
Okay, and now 9970, we'll do a roll call on that.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Silikowski?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
9970 passes.
Okay.
So on one through 16, minus 9413 and 9970, Mr. Giordano?
Uh, no for one and nine, yes for the rest.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 16, minus 9413 and 9970, pass.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to non-certificated personnel office. We have resolutions one through four. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster, can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Callie, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four, pass.
Okay, we have non-certificated personnel operational, items one through five. Can I have a motion, please?
Giordano, motion?
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Giordano and Burns. Any discussion on non-certificated personnel operational? Nope. Mr. Mara?
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five, pass.
Thank you. Now we have non-certificated personnel other, and we have items one, one through 15. Yeah, one through 15. Items one through 15, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you, and can I have a second?
Weber will second.
Ms. Ellis Foster and Mrs. Weber, Mr. Weber, sorry. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Carroll, just before we have any discussion, there's administrative correction on page 21, item number 13. Item B, Sheri Dansky is being administratively removed, and we are moving that to, to number two, page 14, and we are adding Ms. Dansky to the retirement.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now, any discussion?
Yes, we have apparently three retirements on the agenda, and Mr. Mara gave us the fourth one. We have Harriet Schaefer, Sharah, paraprofessional aide, 10 years of service, Sheri Grazioni, Southwood, paraprofessional aide, and Juanahida, okay, Gornaz. Sheri Graziole, Southwood, paraprofessional aide, and Juanahida, okay, Gornaz Vera, Oldbridge High School, world language, twenty years, a total of forty-three years of service for all three of them, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
You also have three noon hour supervisors.
Yes. Three or two?
And good luck with your retirements.
There's three, number two, page fourteen, there are three noon hour supervisors under retirement, Dolores Passaretti, Susan, Suzanne Ralph, and Sheri Danski was administratively correctly placed in that motion, she was under resignation, she was moved over to retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Holger.
Mrs. De Carroll?
Yes.
We're still under discussion, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge the noon hour supervisors who are leaving us, they've served for what I consider many years, and I've also worked with a number of them on volunteers, you know, volunteer committees and on PTAs through the years, and congratulations, and you'll be missed.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through fifteen, pass.
Thank you, now we have certificated personnel. One through, one through forty-three, that's a lot, I need a motion to-
Calley will move.
Sorry, and I need a second.
Burns will second.
Okay, any discussion? Lots going on there. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Mara, please.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No for twenty-eight, yes for the rest.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through forty-three, pass.
Okay, now we're on to non-certificated personnel transportation, we have resolutions one through nine, can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel transportation, Madam President, one through nine.
Thank you, and can I have a second?
Weber will second.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mara?
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine, pass.
All right, transportation, we have resolutions one through four, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster, can I have a second?
Calley will second.
Ms. Calley, thank you, any discussion?
Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four, pass.
Okay, now we have supplies, equipment, and services, we have resolutions one through eight.
Weber will move it.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster, any discussion? Okay.
I do have a question, I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead.
Number eight, for the reasonable and customary rates for independent evaluations, when were the last time these were raised or looked at? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Tooe's response was that they've been the same rate for four years.
Yeah, I saw his fingers, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight, pass.
Okay, now we have miscellaneous, resolutions one through ten, can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move miscellaneous items one through ten, Madam President.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Calley will second.
Calley? Any discussion on miscellaneous?
Yes, please, Madam President?
Yes.
I just want, on number nine and number ten, Mr. Domeno, Coach Lons, thank you for presenting this to us.
Calley. Okay, anyone else? Nope, and I'm just gonna concur with Mr. De Prima, it's, I'm very glad we're doing this, and please, if you see Mr. DiMarco, tell him, send my thoughts. Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yeah.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through ten, pass.
Okay, now we have board secretary and board business, item number one, can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move item number one, Madam President.
Can I have a second?
Weber will second.
Thank you, and do we have any discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Dunn?
So, you know, this, this resolution, you know, does affect a lot of different things within the district, and quite honestly, I've gotten a lot of emails, pro and con, more con than pro, and honestly, you know, some of the emails I've gotten were vile. Quite honestly, you know, I've served this district for almost eleven years in the capacity of a board member, and I've been aligned with ninety-five percent of the programs and desires of the community for what's best for our children. And quite honestly, my resolution that I presented last week basically condemns the use of executive actions because what's going on is they're utilizing it more and more and they're usurping our home rule authority as a school board. I know that it's controversial, I know that people think, especially the emails that I receive, that I'm a political hack. Honestly, I'm very apolitical, if everyone knows me, I don't get along with either party, I don't get involved with party politics, and this has nothing to do with politics. You know, I don't have a designation after my name, there's no D, there's no R, so politics is out of this equation as far as I'm concerned. Some others do have a designation after their name, but I don't, and this is not political, and the emails I got saying that I was operative for the Republican Party was just absolutely insane. You know, I've dedicated my life here in Oldbridge to volunteerism and giving back every minute of my life between being a school board member for the last eleven years and being involved with the emergency services here in Oldbridge, specifically the South Oldbridge Fire Department, I am the chief of the department, and quite honestly, I've had the, how can I put it, the unfortunate circumstance on numerous occasions, numerous occasions, watching our children being cut out of cars, dead, and it breaks my heart that I have to do that sometimes, but that's my responsibility, and every time I have to do that, my heart's broken. And I know that people are angry with me, I know people are upset with me, but I'm a very principled person, and my resolution is not debating masks or no masks. The resolution that I set forth is to ask the governor to reconsider issuing executive orders that infringe on our school board's authority. It has nothing to do with the mask mandate. I believe in universal masking, I believe that, you know, masks do work and they are appropriate within the schools. However, that should be our, the nine of us should decide that, we should decide that. Because, you know what, we do answer to the voters, we do have to explain ourselves, and I know that I have explained myself over the last years as being a proactive board member, and you know what? A lot of people in this room know who I am, they know my character, and I'm not doing this for political purposes, I'm not doing this to stir controversy, I'm doing it at a principle, because right now, Trenton, for some reason, has something out for the Oldbridge public school system. They took fifteen million dollars away from us, fifteen million dollars, and we've had a hardship over the last three and a half years trying to balance our budget to ensure the educational enrichment of our children. And, you know, we're gritting our teeth, and the nine of us are working very hard to find an avenue to make sure that we deliver the education that we're entrusted with, and I think with everyone's assistance up here, we are doing that. But this, 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 this resolution wasn't meant to be divisive, I'm angry that we have lost home rule on certain things, and if we go down that road, it's not good. So, I did listen to everyone tonight, and obviously, you know what, my heart goes out to people who are adversely affected by COVID. It is real, it's not a made-up disease or virus, but it's there, and quite honestly, people are thanking the Board of Ed, who spoke tonight, for instituting the mandate. We didn't institute the mandate, we didn't have that ability to exercise our rights as a local school district, and that's what the resolution is about, exercising our authority, because everyone on this board gives a thousand percent all the time, and we are reviewing, we are digesting, we are discussing, we are fighting among ourselves, we are in discord a lot of times, and then all of a sudden, you know, the, 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 the decision is out of our hands. So, with that all said, you know, I just want to make sure everyone understands my position. And, you know what, I don't hold grudges, I think that everyone has a right to speak their mind, that's what's great about society, that's great about America, we all can voice our opinions, but we entrust certain things on our elected officials. And the nine of us were elected here to do the work of the children and taxpayer, and we're gonna continue to do that. But this, 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 the whole notion that it's politically motivated, that it's something that's divisive, is absolutely absurd as far as I'm concerned. I got over twelve emails, mostly against, and I respond to each, to each and every one of those emails explaining my position. And at this point, I am not going to ask to rescind the resolution because I'm principled, and I believe that Trenton should allow us to decide what's in the best interest. Yes, universal masks is very important and does work, but I'm concerned about the fact that we are losing our authority, we are losing the ability to self-government, and I'm gonna continue to fight what's in my heart, because I've done it for the last twenty years plus in this community, and I'm not going to abdicate that responsibility. So, I know that people will be angry with me still pushing forward with this resolution, it's nothing to do with mask mandates in school, it has to do with the fact that we are losing our authority as an independent home rule school district who has the right to determine what's in the best interest of our children, not Trenton. With that said, I'm gonna vote yes, and I am sincerely sorry that, you know what, I opened this discussion in a way that has affected our community, however, I truly believe that if we don't take a stand and say, hey, enough's enough, let us decide, then it's only gonna be utilized more and more, and we are gonna lose our authority. So with that said, I do sincerely apologize if I've hurt people's feelings and opened up some sore wounds, but I believe in the school character, I'm principled, and I wanna make sure that we, the nine, decide what's in the best interest of our school district and not Trenton, thank you.
Mrs. De Carroll, if I may?
Mm-hmm. Good.
As Mr. Dunn alluded to, we received a lot of correspondence on this subject from last week, most of it anti-resolution. One of them even questioned my integrity. That one kinda hurt, because whoever out there knows me knows how important this responsibility is to me, and integrity is my middle name. I too am one of the least political people you'd ever meet in your life, I really don't care. My opinion is, we should, we and you should have a choice for masks, but my opinion doesn't matter, you guys put me up here, so I have to respect the wants and needs of the community, and I will. I will be voting no. That's it.
Okay, thank you, anyone else?
I would just like to say that if this mandate didn't use the word masks, I could be in favor for it. Unfortunately, the resolution, I'm sorry. But this is a divisive issue, and if we had just said, we don't want any more mandates, and left it at that, then I could be in favor for it, but I'll be voting no on this.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes. So, a lot of people that spoke tonight and sent in their emails, most of them did miss the point, as Mr. Dunn was explaining, and this is just against the use of executive orders, and it doesn't recommend or not recommend mask-wearing. And I guarantee that if the executive order two fifty-one banned masks in schools, the reaction would be opposite, and many of you would demand that we challenge these executive orders, so it does go both ways. The email, the email I quoted from Fauci, he is the leading doctor that most people like to quote, so the people that said that it was irrelevant, they would be wrong, and the executive order says if you violate it, there's a disorderly persons offense, which is a thousand dollar fine and six months in jail, so they will try to lock you up. And same thing today, executive order two fifty-three, another encroachment on personal liberties and local authority. And unfortunately, we might be past the point of no return, because a lot of people, as I've said, are conditioned to this, and we've allowed these executive orders to happen and the change in our society to happen. And just today, I saw a commercial about how in New York, you'll be discriminated against if you don't show your vaccine passport, and I wouldn't be surprised if they try to bring that to New Jersey. So, either way, whether the mandate is forcing the kids to wear masks in schools, if they banned masks in schools, I would still be against the executive orders, though not enthusiastically, but I still would, so that's why I'm gonna vote yes for this resolution.
Anyone else?
Yes, I received quite a few emails also, and the one where Mr. Mara mentioned my name in it, I received that email also, okay? And I'm gonna be on the side of Mr. Dunn, we are getting closer and closer to socialism, communism in this country with these executive orders, it's power and control, and I'm gonna be voting yes on this particular item, and I have to, because we are losing everything, we're probably too far gone already, but if you people wanna go along with it, God bless you.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Carroll?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, first, I wanted to thank everybody for always coming out and speaking and giving us your viewpoints, and to those people who sent emails. My concern last week was that regardless of the intent behind this resolution, it will only cause unnecessary division and greater division in our community, and that's what's happening. I agree with Mr. Dunn that we have dealt with numerous, numerous hardships from the state, the impact of state decisions. But I just want to level set that this is the first executive order impacting the schools. So, I don't want to give the intention, it seems like the intention is that- So I, I don't want to give the intention, it, it seems like the intention is that we are constantly being hit with executive orders. This is the first executive order because of a health crisis. Not a mandate on budgets or, or anything. It's a mandate because we're in the middle of a pandemic, which is the first in over 100 years. So that was the intent behind it. I also agree with Ms. Burns is that because it's the mask in it, it is giving the impression and it's bringing up that controversy of the mask. I want to be perfectly clear. I believe we need a mask mandate in the school. There is, yeah, I was told last week to do some research. I have over 15 studies, 10 of them peer-reviewed, talking about the effects of masks specifically in schools from groups such as Duke University, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, National Academy of Sciences, International Journal of Nursing Studies, the Environmental Pollution Journal, the Journal of Urban Health, the Journal of American Medicine Associates, medical, the Wisconsin Medical Journal. They all have said that masks are effective in reducing the spread of COVID. It also says there's, at least from the documentation, they have no medical effects on children. So I believe that our main focus, as I said last week, should be on ensuring that our students are back five full days. And to do that, it is asking us all and the children to wear masks. We know we do not want to go back to hybrid. That is not fair to the staff. That is not fair to the children. The other day, and you know, while sharing some stories, the other day, I had somebody from the community say to me, what has happened to the Olbridge that comes together? You know, I don't know what happened to that community at some days. I was really disheartened when I got some calls from people who said they wanted to come out to the meeting, but they're afraid for their safety coming to a board meeting because of some of the actions over the last several months. They are intimidated by people and they're afraid of the repercussions if they come out. And I'm just sad that that is where we are. But as I reflect, I believe we still are that community. We are a community that looks out for one another, that cares about each other, and we work together. We have done it over and over in the past. And I know we can get back to that again. Masking in, in schools shows compassion and empathy for others. It is not some conspiracy. I think the data from the medical things verify, show that it does help. The survey from the parents and the staff show that they want it. I've gotten numerous, numerous emails, calls, texts. The overwhelmingly majority of the people do want us to see this mask mandate. And because this resolution is giving the impression and is making us look at this in that manner, I am voting no on the resolution. Thank you.
Mrs. DeCaro? Yes. Okay. I'm going to echo a little bit what Mrs. Burns says. Regardless of what the original intent of this resolution was, it is clear that it has become a masked debate. I want to thank everybody that came out this evening to speak. I've spent the better part of 30 years volunteering in this town for this school district in a lot of positions. And if you know anything about me, you know that I have spent, that means I've spent half my life fighting for all students and standing beside all parents for their right to fight for what their child needs or what their child wants. And if you know me, you've heard me say this before. I'm going to fight for what my child needs. But if what my child needs could adversely affect another child, particularly another child's health, then the fact that my child is upset about wearing a mask, that doesn't matter. My child has to take a backseat to protect. I told, I, I loved the email that came from a former student about peanut butter and jelly. I had actually made a note about that this afternoon. I told my children that they couldn't bring peanut butter and jelly to school anymore because if they did, you literally could kill another student. Peanut butter and jelly was the only thing they ate. But they understood that their, that their sacrifice was needed in order to protect the health and literally the life of their stu, of fellow students and their friends. I have to say that I agree with the mask mandate. I've done my research and I agree with the experts and the science that state my wearing a mask protects others from me. I don't like wearing a mask, but it's a minor inconvenience I'm willing to suffer in order to protect others. If my children were still in, my children, although they're adults now, they wear their masks. They know it's to protect others. If they were still in school, I would make them wear their mask to protect others. Because if, God forbid, my actions made another, made a child sick, or the actions of my child made another child sick or worse, I would never be able to live with myself. It's clear that the, from what was said tonight and the emails and the, that were read and the emails and the texts and the phone calls and even the Facebook messages that I've gotten over the last week, that the overwhelming majority of parents are in favor of wearing the masks as well as staff. I, unfortunately, I too have heard from many parents who were afraid to come out and speak because while they're in favor of the mask mandate and in favor of keeping our children safe, they're fearful of being bullied. And from what I've seen, especially on social media, I can't say that I blame them. But what I find is extremely sad is I'm wondering what this is, what all of this is teaching our children because they're watching too. Governor Murphy said in his mask mandate, and I'm paraphrasing here, in his announcement, that he was making this decision so school districts could concentrate on what they were supposed to concentrate on, educating our students. He said that by him making the decision for all schools, boards of education could avoid the very thing that's been happening here, particularly the last two weeks. And I too, I, I, I may, it may have even been me on our walk on Saturday that asked Ms. Ellis Foster that question, what happened to, what happened to the Olbridge that we knew? A town where everybody used to look out for one another. By the way, that's exactly what wearing a mask is supposed to do, looking out for other people. I just want to ask a clarifying question to Mr. Parton. If this resolution passes, what exactly does it change for us in Olbridge as far as the mask mandate?
This resolution is a resolution to state an opinion of the majority of the Board of Education. So what it changes is that you have expressed yourselves as an entity. It does not change the law, nor does it change your obligation to enforce and abide by the law.
So the teachers, staff, children, and any visitors to our building still need to wear a mask?
Yes.
Okay. And what are the repercussions for violating the governor's mandate? I heard somebody say fines of up to $1,000 and...
And six months in jail, yeah.
Six months in jail and...
Well, there, there is language in there, and Mr. Giudano alluded to it before, that there cannot be a resolution that is inconsistent with Executive Order 251. The same language appears in Executive Order 253. Just to be clear, the Board of Education has the authority and the ability to express its opinion, whatever that may be. Your resolution expressing disagreement with Executive Order 251 while still complying with it would not violate Executive Order 251. There are other districts that you've read about that are contemplating such an action. That is not what Mr. Dunn's resolution says. So if the board supports the resolution, it would not be illegal to pass it. But as you said, and as I previously answered you, you would still be fully complying with 251 regardless of the outcome of this vote that is pending right now.
Okay. Well, I'm asking because if this passes, I don't want this resolution to be mistakenly interpreted by anyone that they don't have to wear a mask. So I just wanted that clarified. And what happens if somebody is imposed a fine? One of, you know, one of our, whether it's a staff member or whether it's a student, what happens if a fine is imposed? Who pays for that?
That is, that, that kind of enforcement would be a couple steps from right now. But in the event that a representative of the school district intentionally violates the order and the prosecutor or the attorney general chooses to pursue that, the payment would be on that person. Because while your staff members are indemnified for their actions in the course of their employment, the course of their employment also requires them to follow all laws. So a teacher, in, in the instance that a teacher or Mr. Sididino, just to pick a random employee, were to say, it's okay, take off that mask, that would be a violation of a state law without the authority to do so unless it's in one of the exemptions we talked about. So that individual would be responsible for whatever repercussions came out of a possible prosecution.
But that's staff?
Yes.
And if children come to school without masks and they're somehow...
The way that the executive order is written, it is not impossible that a child willfully violating the law could be prosecuted. And if the child, if the child is not a legal child, the child is over 18, then the child could be prosecuted under the disorderly persons offense. There is no listing for juvenile prosecution in Executive Order 251. I would hope that people would not be, you know, jailed or fined if they are in grade school. And it is not clear from the executive order that that's the intent.
But I, I, I would hope...
But the prosecution language is in there for all people over the age of 18.
Okay. Well, obviously, we all hope that nobody's going to, you know, fine or prosecute a child. I just wanted to know that if the, if the fines were imposed, not by us, because it's not our executive order, but if fines were imposed by state representatives, who pays for that?
I, I can't off the top of my head think of a case where the individual would not be the person who would pay.
Okay. All right.
Can I follow up on that question? Just for clarification. So the disorderly persons, would that fall under a 2C or would that fall under a category in which an employee, said superintendent, or a board member making such a directive to someone to remove their mask, could they lose their licensure or ability to serve?
Yeah, that, the executive order speaks in terms of the actual violation in and of itself. But like crimes touching upon any sort of morality, like intentional violations of any law or directions to violate any law by a board member or any other school official, yeah, there could be repercussions through the Board of Examiners as far as licenses. There could be repercussions as far as the School Ethics Act, as far as seating as a public official. Again, that is not set forth in Executive Order 251, but any intentional violation of a law by a school official can have additional consequences.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parton. Anyway, regardless of how I feel personally, I feel that it's my duty and it's the duty of every board member up here to represent the community. And in a case where it's not unanimous, you, it's our responsibility to go with the majority. And the majority are against this resolution, so I will be voting no.
I have a couple of comments. This, this pandemic came from China, depending on who you want to listen to. And the other part of it is that it was unfortunately a pandemic born about the worst time that it could possibly have been born during a presidential election, a very vigorous, virulent, nasty presidential election. It had become weaponized and a lot of disbelief was propagated, in my opinion, by the, the current media. And to talk about what media can do for you, in 1918 was, that was the last, 1918, 1919 was the last major pandemic in, in the world when 50 million people died of the Spanish Flu. Do you know where the came, that came from, the Spanish Flu? It came from the army barracks in Fort Riley in Kansas. And the press in that day would have it not to be blamed on the Americans, so somehow it became the Spanish Flu. There's so, there's so many camps in the scientific world. The European Union, which is approximately the same size as the United States and has had their share of difficulties with it, a large portion of them are doing various, various things on masking. And the UK, for example, is one of the countries that got hit very early by the Delta, the Delta virus. And they've, they, for the most part, do not use masking. So there are various and sundry opinions out there. The other thing is that there are, I guess, so many different opinions that you can get from this group or that group. It's very hard for anybody to believe if you're not a trained scientist because the TV is full of people from one side or the other. So, you know, I'm gonna, I agree with Mr. Dunn. I think that this is more of a challenge to the system. And for that reason, I will be voting yes for it.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to speak? Did I miss anybody? No?
Madam President?
Yes.
So basically, before, you, you can say your words of wisdom before I ask for a possible amendment to this resolution, which we can do based upon our policies.
I'm sorry?
So do you want to speak first?
Um, what do you want your amendment to say?
Well, basically, what I would like, obviously, you know, there is a lot of discord up here and my resolution wasn't meant to cause discord. It was to make sure that we strongly worded our dissatisfaction with the executive orders coming from Trenton. And I utilized 251 as the impetus or, or the driving force behind it. And I still believe that, you know, our powers as a local entity are being usurped. And we should be able to decide what's in the best interest of our children, not someone in Trenton. However, you know, I'm in a position right now where I'm willing to compromise some of the language within the resolution so that at least we could move forward collectively as a Board of Education, allowing and making it known to Trenton that the use of executive orders are disingenuous and it does usurp our authority. So what I propose, so that we can get some sort of consensus here, is to modify the resolution slightly, if I make a motion, so that the intent of the resolution is clear. And after listening to my colleagues on the board, there will be support for the resolution if I retract or remove a few words. The goal is to make it known to Trenton that we are tired of being usurped. We have the authority based upon local schools. We have, by home rule, the League of Municipalities has stated that over and over again. And that was the intent of my resolution. I wasn't here to make a political statement. I'm apolitical and I'm going to continue to be apolitical because politics does not belong in the Board of Education. I've always said that and I will continue to say that. So what I'm going to propose right now is just to take out a few words and to add a few words so that it stays consistent with the fact that I want Trenton to know that this Board of Education does not want executive orders dictating to us what's right and wrong for our children. So if I can make a motion, Mr. Parton, is that permissible based upon our policy and bylaws?
Yes, you can make, it's actually under Robert's Rules of Order, but yes, you can make a motion to amend. Just please be specific so that everybody can write down what changes you are suggesting.
Okay. Okay. So is this the appropriate time or should we do it at a different point, Mr. Parton?
No, you can make a motion now.
Okay, so I, I'd make a motion to revise my resolution that I presented last week to state, "The Old Bridge Board of Education is adamantly against the use of executive orders by Governor Murphy to usurp and circumvent local school authority regarding matters that adversely affect the quality and delivery of education. The Old Bridge Board of Education implores the governor to refrain from using executive orders and allow individual school districts, upon recommendation of the superintendent and action of the Board of Education, to exercise their authority and oversight based upon circumstances and facts that they are presented." So the body and the, the, the meaning of the resolution stays intact. That was what I was striving for. Yes, I believe we, the community, should decide what's right and wrong regarding masking. And that's what I am fighting for. I'm not fighting for whether a universal is correct or not.
Can you read that again, please? I'm sorry.
Sure, I can read it again, Mr. De Prima. "The Old Bridge Board of Education is adamantly against the use of executive orders by Governor Murphy to usurp and circumvent local school board authority regarding the matters that adversely affect the quality and delivery of education. The Board of Education implores the governor to refrain from using executive orders and allow individual school districts, upon recommendation of the superintendent and action by the Board of Education, to exercise their authority and oversight based upon circumstances and facts as that they are presented." That is our responsibility as a Board of Education. So I'm willing to concede so that we make it known that executive orders are an infringement of a home rule. And that's the goal.
You have a motion to amend from Mr. Dunn, so you need a second to continue the discussion.
Giordano, second.
Okay.
Discussion on the amended motion.
Ms. DeCaro?
Go ahead.
I still don't agree with this. However, you, I believe you definitely need to take out adversely. If you want the governor to stop making mandates that affect how we govern our education, you're still making a statement about, first of all, as Ms. Ellis Foster said, this is the first mandate. So, um, but the word adversely, I believe should also come out.
Okay.
Well, so you would be okay with a mandate that, I'm not talking to you, Mrs. DeCaro, I heard Mr. Giordano say no. You would be okay with a mandate that didn't adversely affect the education? Or you just want the government to stop making mandates telling us how to run the district? It's one or the other.
Well, like I said earlier, personally, like I said, the executive order could have went either way and I would not want one person to control how local authorities conduct their business. Most of you probably have heard of, uh, "I'm only a bill on Capitol Hill." You see, because, um, for most of history, the House of Representatives and the Senate would vote on a bill and then the governor would approve it. Or in this case, the General Assembly in the Senate. But now, of course, in the name of public safety, yeah, in the name of public safety, one person, many governors have taken it upon themselves to assert their authority without any discussion with their legislators.
Right, but the way the resolution, the way Mr. Dunn reworded the resolution, it still says regarding matters that adversely affect the quality and delivery of education.
Yeah, I would...
So if you want to leave adversely in there, it's still misplaced.
No, I would, I would keep it the way it was amended, personally.
Okay, well, well, it's my, so I can give up my turn speaking. There were other reasons I was against this resolution. You know, target on our back, it has no teeth, it doesn't really serve any purpose whatsoever. So I would still vote no on this, but I think Ms. Ellis Foster has something to say.
Good.
Uh, my, my one request is because it was changed and I think it has a totally different nature to it now, that we, um, push this off for the vote either in the agenda or regular meeting so that it gives the public time. Because now we told, we have changed it. So I think, um, I, I would, I would request, can we, because we're changing it, we don't have time for the public input, can we push it off either to, for the vote, to either the agenda meeting or the regular meeting? And then, I just want to echo, removing adversely takes out, I'm sorry, removing adversely takes out personal bias. Either, we either say we don't want executive orders, period. And taking out adversely kind of says that. It doesn't say, you know, if there was a executive order to give every kid $1,000, you know, I guess that one's okay. You know, I mean, it's either saying we're against them or we're not. So I, that's, I think, is the intent for removing the adversely word, taking out any kind of bias. But my main thing is I think we should push this off to give the, the public time to comment.
So, Mrs. Ellis Foster, is that a motion to table?
Yeah, a, a motion to table.
Okay, so that supersedes the discussion of the motion to amend. We're having fun now. So we need a second on the motion to table.
Callie, seconds.
Discussion on the motion to table.
I, I, I actually have one more, um, comment that I'd like to see it revised as, would I do that now or would I wait?
No, we, we have to address the issue of the tabling of the motion first and then we would go back to discussion.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. Any other, any discussion on tabling it? No? Okay. Okay, so we're going to vote, roll call?
So on tabling, Board Secretary and Board Business Item Number One, Mr. Silikowski, yes or no? To table?
Yes, to table it, right?
Yes. Mr. Weber? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
No.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Caro?
Yes.
The yeses are one, two, three, four, five, six. The yeses are six, the, the resolution is tabled.
Okay.
And that ends discussion of the resolution because it's no longer on your agenda. So, um, that will be placed on your September agenda.
Okay, very good, very good. So I will save this big, long thing that I have written up for then. All right, so let's move on. Where are we now? Okay, so now we are on to hearing of the residents, any school district issue. Um, once again, a reminder that it's five minutes. And again, I feel the need to say, there's really no back and forth, there's no Q and A. If you have your questions, you can say your questions. Um, Mr. Sididino will speak to all of your questions at the end of the hearing of the residents. And if everybody in the audience can please be respectful. Okay, please state your name also.
Good evening, everyone. Ella Morales. I won't be seven minutes like last week, I'll be just about two minutes. So I just wanted to say that my parents brought me here from the Soviet Union when I was four years old. And, um, you know, it may not happen here, and it's not going to happen here overnight. It's been happening, what they're pushing for is, it's been happening incrementally. And that's how it's happening, nice and slow, nice and subtle, so people, you know, don't really notice it. People need to do a little reading. Read some, read some, read some, do some reading, people. Read Animal Farm, read 1984, read A Brave New World. Get educated, educate yourselves, or else your grandchildren might be living in the United States of Socialist Republics. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, good evening.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wallace and I'm going to be a ninth grader. And I was just wondering, like, with the mask mandates, like, at the end of the day, my ears are hurting really bad. Is it possible, like, throughout the day, if something, you could go outside? Because like even five minutes makes a difference. Also, um, I've noticed that, like, on the survey thing, that there weren't really a lot of, like, people responding compared to, like, the overall population of, you know, I guess, students. Is it possible that there could be, like, some paper thing? So, um, because I feel like a lot of people aren't checking their emails and it might not be, like, really, I guess, people's opinion being valued. Also, I feel like I'm the only kid here. A lot of the students who it's really directly affecting don't really have much say in what's happening. And I think really we should be able to say, like, how, basically, it's affecting our lives. So I would really like that.
My name is Karen Taten. I have a question regarding transportation. You learned last week about the Brown Town bus company resuming. I'm wondering if there's a plan to replace those 24 routes? I've been seeing throughout the state this is a huge issue. Um, you know, with, with the solutions being either having teachers drive buses, having parents bring kids to school, changing hours of the school day. With it being two weeks away, I'm just wondering if these are things that we should be worried about, you know, whether our kids not getting on buses or us having to rearrange our entire lives if, if school hours are changing and how we're going to do that.
Okay.
No, we, we've already started the process to find substitute bus companies to provide those routes and I believe they're already in place. So there will be no issue with that. And Brown Town has extended the termination of their contracts to the end of September. So we're, we, we should be in good shape, there should be no issues.
Okay, next.
Michelle Ostrowski. I just wanted the parents to be aware that your kids might have had COVID. So when you go to the doctor, ask for an antibody test. My family was sick, like, before COVID came out. I know a lot of people at the school were sick. So they might have an actual antibody, which of course the government's saying that you still need a vaccine. But it might help ease your fears. So I would check that. And the vitamin D level is probably low because your kids are sitting in the room for a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else standing or coming down. So at this point, I will end, do, we don't have anything else email-wise, right? Okay. I will end the hearing of the residents. And Mr. Sididino, if you can address some questions?
Thank you. The first was kind of a question, I believe it came from Sarah Wallace. Sarah, built within the schedule, it allows for mask breaks. I do not know if you were present in, in school last year or you, you stayed remote. But we had mask breaks within the school day, students were outside. Not only during a recess period, but just kind of allowing the teachers to have the ability to go outside with the students so they take their masks off. We will be having phys ed as much as possible outside as well, including recess. We providing for outdoor tables, for lunch periods to be outside and so forth. I would also suggest, because you're right, my ears are killing me right now from having this thing on, that sometimes they have an adapter that attaches it to the back that, so it doesn't pull on your ears. That has been helpful when I've used those in the past. As far as the number of respondents, this, uh, this survey did exceed the respondents from a previous survey. And we did advertise it a great deal because it was part of the state plan that requires feedback from the community, not just parents, every six days, 60 days. I, I, I hear you and echo your thoughts about having students respond in certain situations. Maybe in the next grouping, we can have availability for students or put something available for students when in school, one to be in school within the next 60-day period for data collection. But as the requirements we have now for, uh, collection from the public, it doesn't specify, allow for the students to do it, other than like you, you did tonight very eloquently and bravely, so thank you very much for that. The Brown Town bus issue was settled, you did not address, we will not be using teachers as bus drivers. A bus driver does require a CDL license that is like fi- finding gold on the beach. It's very hard to do and not every, not easy to get a CDL license. So we will not be using our teachers as bus drivers. And I think that addresses all the question portions that came up in the second portion of reading, uh, hearing from the public.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, any old business?
Madam President, I'm not sure where this will fit in, but I have a, a possible proposal to, to assist, you know, our teachers and our students to get an extended mask break on the exterior of the building. So would that be in a new business or old business? I know it's been discussed, so I'm not sure if it falls in the new or old.
It would, it would fall under old, Mr. Dunn, because this is a topic that we've been discussing already tonight.
Terrific. So I know that there's a lot of back and forth here about masks and, and children needing more of a break. And I know, uh, Mr. Sididino and the administration have put in avenues where students can get outside and, and, and take a break, whether it's through gym, phys ed, whatever it's for lunch or recess. But have, have we given any kind of consideration to having an exterior classroom? I know we've gotten a tremendous amount of COVID money. I know teachers, I, 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 I speak to teachers all the time, obviously, for certain reasons. And they would like to have the, the potential of giving a lesson on the exterior under a tent with tables. So you can go outside for a 45-minute lesson and be able to, you know, be mask-free and, but be able to still give educational enrichment. I know that, you know, there's a debate about the mask curtain, your ears and getting the mask break. And maybe if we gave that provision to our educators, they would use it, you know, specifically in September, October, November, when the weather's cooperative. And hopefully by then, this Delta variant and all the issues that are affecting all these mandates and executive orders, we can mitigate, you know, and give our kids and teachers a, a much deserved break on the exterior of the building. So I'm asking if we can consider tents, chairs outside each elementary school at least because I think that this impacts more the elementary schools than more the middle and, and high schools.
On the, on the table tent area, the table chair type of topic, we kind of discussed that in the, um, the plan to return. In fact, um, Mr. Dr. Tuwi and Mr. Marra have been working diligently on providing outdoor learning spaces for not only eating but learning with, with picnic tables and so forth that'll be outside for that, that's the purpose of it. We do have tents at several, or had tents at several of our ESY locations. The morphs of the tents weren't to protect from the rain, but more for some from the heat and the sun, having the kids outside, so they provide them shade during the hot weather. If the board would want to entertain that, we could look at providing tents up until the winter season outside, get a price quote for, for such a thing and do that going forward. We didn't use them for the outside because the, the weather tends to cooperate more in the fall and you have more days outside. You can go outside without a tent because of the sun and so forth and, you know, use the picnic tables and the seating that we have, have outside. And there's nothing stopping from, you know, like when I was in school, we had situations where the kids could just, you know, pick up their little chair and take it outside. We don't have connected, um, you know, desks like they were the one-piece desk that I had in Prokhor School, um, at the elementary levels, kind of more at the high school level. So that's something we could, we could do as well.
Could, could we make a motion this evening under old business to give you and Mr. Marra the authority to...
I don't think we need a motion for it. Right? It's investigatory and we have the authority to, unless we exceed a certain dollar amount, we have the ability to do that anyway.
Okay, so then, then I would suggest, and I hope that my colleagues on the Board of Education will agree, that we would like to suggest to the administration and the business administrator to, to find avenues to provide for exterior classrooms for the fall months to allow teachers and our educators and students to have lessons outside, maybe one tent or one area.
So I just want to be clear on that, I want to interrupt you, but you, so we've already done the exterior portions of classroom, but you're, you want us to specifically bring tents outside?
I, I think that it would be more conducive to keep the sun off. I think it would be a better learning environment that you're under a canopy. Um, you know, obviously, if you're trying to utilize a mobile smartboard, you can, you know, at least have, you know, the shade to make sure that the, the use of a, a mobile chalkboard or whiteboard... or whiteboard can be utilized in those circumstances. I think it would give a refreshing change, uh, to some of our students and teachers. At least they have the option of doing a lesson outside. They can book it through, I guess, the, the, the principal or, or, or the, uh, office. And I think it, it would be very well received. And I think that it, it would give, uh, the ability of people to at least get a fresh breath during a lesson.
Okay. We'll investigate it and get a price quote and get back to, report it back to the board.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Sididino.
Under old business?
Mm-hmm. And Mr. Webber?
This, this survey that was taken had, I think, they 1,696, um, people, parents answered to the survey. Am I correct?
Yes.
And it was around 61% or 1,000 people that were in favor of masking. The other 39% were not. Is that essentially correct as well?
No.
All right. Correct me.
It's 30% around were not. The other 9% were indifferent.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, by my estimate, from having done extensive demographics on the board, it probably is, unless you got an accurate number for it, more accurate number, probably between 12 and 15,000 parents. So clearly, if this were an election, it would have been a landslide that we want masking because it would have been 60% plus against 30%. But it is only 12% of all the parents. So it's not entirely a sweeping mandate until it's confirmed. But, um, just something to be aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Webber.
Ms. DeCara?
Yes.
Can, um, kind of going back to Mr. Dunn's resolution. I apologize, uh, Mrs. Burns, I didn't realize by doing that motion, you didn't get to put your input. So I would like to suggest if anybody has any, Mr. Dunn, could they send them to you? And you can kind of look at it and decide if it makes it better, if it helps your intent. Um, I just don't want anybody to be excluded from making a comment. Um, and then if they, if you, you know, they can send them directly, directly to you. And, and then if we could have just a, prior to the meeting, if we can have it just so we can look at it. Because seeing it in print is always a lot easier than just listening to it. So that's why I wanted to make that recommendation to people. If they do have input, they, they could send that to you.
Ms. Ellis Foster, absolutely. Uh, I'm always available, uh, for my colleagues. And I would most definitely, uh, be happily, uh, to take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Are we still in old business? Anything else?
Yes. Um, back to the electricity in the schools, um, going to Geik. You could see the high school lights on at night and there's nobody in them at all. So that should be taken into consideration. And, uh, back to the resolution about the executive order. Um, in general, since the beginning, after the two weeks to slow the spread, I've been calling for choice, whether it came for in-person classes five days a week or the masks the entire time. I've always, um, believed that individuals should have the choice of what they want their children to have in their education. So I'm not, uh, with grandstanding or parading for the angry people, as they like to call you. And assignment for, uh, next month's discussion, ask yourself why you haven't worn masks during swine flu, Ebola, or any other flu season before 2020. And then also ask yourself with the vaccination requirement, um, based on what I've heard, you can still spread the virus even though you have that vaccine. So why would you remove the testing if you got vaccinated? To me, that's more evidence that it's about control and they want to push you in a certain direction. But that's for next month's discussion. And that's it for old business. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else old business?
Okay. Um, I do just want to make a few comments. Um, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Dunn, what you say, you know, what you said about, you know, you not being political and you not making that what your resolution was not, uh, political. But the problem is, is when you use the words, you know, dictator and when you use the word, you know, draconian and, uh, and things like that, it becomes, it, it sounds political. Um, so that's, that's the problem that, you know, I personally have with, with the comments and, and that, that you've made, you know, over the past, you know, tonight and, and last meeting. Um, so, you know, I, I believe you when you say that you are not making this political, but it sounds like it is. It's just the way it sounds. So, um, I just wanted to share that because that's how I felt. Um, you know, we all did get a lot of nasty emails. Uh, sorry. We got emails. Um, some were nice, some were nasty. Um, I got one personally that just went to me, calling me a disgrace, telling me to resign. Um, and, uh, you know, telling me that I was a bad parent. And, uh, he, this person felt sorry for my children. Um, and, uh, you know, I shared that with them. And, uh, you know, they had some, some words to say. Um, I didn't tell them who sent it, uh, because I'm not like that and I would never do that. But, um, I, my, what I do and the way I base my decisions is I listen to the experts. I listen to our superintendent on matters of school. I listen to our board attorney on matters of law. I listen to our business administrator in matters of finance. I have personal opinions. My personal opinions matter some, but the opinions of everyone are what matters the most for my job as a Board of Education member. So when someone tells me that I'm not going to stand up and fight, I am fighting. I fight every day for these children, for the students of this district. And I believe that the mask mandate, you know, regardless of the executive order, I believe that the children should be wearing masks because we need to mitigate and, and hopefully eradicate this virus. That being said, I don't disagree with the executive order. It's one executive order that we've had, as Ms. Ellis Foster brought up. And the reason that it was brought, you know, the reason that it was made in the first place was to avoid this, was to avoid these discussions. Because everyone has an opinion. We all do. And we all have our reasons for these opinions. But as, as board members, we have a job to keep all students safe, all of them. You know, the pro-choice, pro, you know, it, none of that matters when it comes to the health and safety of the student. And we have to do what's right for the, all of the students. So, um, you know, there's two questions here tonight. There's the mask mandate and there's, you know, Mr. Dunn's resolution that, you know, you, you are, uh, amending. So, uh, I, you know, I, I don't think it's one executive order, uh, order. And, um, I think it was necessary because look at us, look at us here. I'm not sure that if put to a vote, if, if, if we were in charge of this mandate and if it were put to a vote, I'm not sure that the members of this Board of Education would vote for a mask mandate. And that's why the governor did that. So, you know, uh, I appreciate you saying that you were not making this political, Mr. Dunn, um, because it did sound that way. So I'm glad that you clarified it. Thank you.
Mr. Parton? There's been other executive orders that have affected the school district by this governor, hasn't there?
Yeah, there, there have been executive orders from 103 to 253. I think several of them have had impacts on school districts.
So the one that's been established, 251, is not the first executive order impacting decisions made by this Board of Education or any Board of Education within the state of New Jersey? Is that correct?
I'm not going to interpret the executive orders for you, Mr. Dunn. They say what they say and we've been talking about them for 18 months.
These all have to do with COVID though, with the pandemic?
Certainly.
Yes. Okay. So a 100-year virus. That's what these executive orders have, uh, have to do with.
Mr. Pre- um, Madam President, I understand that. But, you know, there was a word saying that this was the only executive order that impacted our schools and it's not. There was executive orders pertaining to high school diplomas done in January by the governor, executive orders as well. So let's make sure that, you know, we have our facts straight and this was not the first executive order impacting the schools.
Right. But they all have to do with mitigating a virus. Okay. Um, anybody else have anything that they say? I think we're, are we onto new business? Anybody have any new business?
Yes. Um, this is definitely a record number of comments from the public since I've been a board member. So congratulations, Olbridge, for that. And, uh, personally, I, I did enjoy the hate mail, as some people would call it, because, um, I was able to learn from it and I was able to better explain the resolution because a lot of people were confused about what the intention of the resolution was. And, um, of course, do the best for yourself to keep yourself healthy, which includes a good diet, exercising, vitamin C, zinc, any other, uh, measures that you might take for yourself. And, uh, enjoy yourself, enjoy the rest of the summer because you never know what executive order will come next. So thank you and I'll see you at the next meeting.
Madam President, I know that we're ending the meeting and, and something's been forgotten to be discussed tonight. And, and I know that our hearts are very heavy this evening with the passing of, of Jack Phillips. And, and I just don't want to forget Jack. You know, Jack, uh, was an extraordinary man. He was a man of character. He was a man of, of faith. And he was an incredible, uh, guiding light for this district, for many, many of our teachers and students and people of, of any denomination, whatever it's, uh, political faith. He was a genuine man. And it's, it's, you know, sad to lose someone who was so impactful for our school district. And I know that, you know, Jack would have his words of wisdom pertaining to what's been discussed tonight. And he will be dearly missed. And I just give you a little anecdote real quick about my relationship with Mr. Phillips. Um, as we know, you know, Jack, uh, was the principal of, uh, Carpenter Elementary School. And he dearly loved his school and students very, very much. And during a tropical storm, which we just had within the last couple of days, deep run overflowed into his school. There was four to five feet of water inside Carpenter School. I got there, being a newly appointed board member and also a fireman, who he called for assistance from the fire department. He was in waist-deep water trying to get water out of his school. Uh, and, and that memory of him loving his school and loving what he did is etched in my mind. And if, and it, and if we could do something to memorialize his impact to a lot of people in this district, I would like to consider that something somehow. Um, but he's been definitely a trailblazer and he's definitely made a difference in many, many, many students' lives and also our, our, our staff. So again, I, I want to express my most heartfelt sympathies to, to Mr. Phillips and his family and all the people who he has touched over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Yes. Um, I'm glad you, you brought up, um, Mr. Phillips because, uh, I too knew him, you know, uh, from back in the Carpenter days when I was PTA president at Chara. We had a lot of dealings, uh, together. And, uh, just, uh, he would, he would have really enjoyed this meeting because, uh, and I, and I shared this with his wife Julie at the, when I went to the wake. Um, one of the things that, uh, Jack Phillips, uh, for every board meeting, every regular televised board meeting, uh, he would come to. And he used to say, they would go out to dinner first. And he used to say that, you know, he was going to have a good night because he was going to dinner and a show. And, uh, he, he would have gotten his money's worth tonight. Um, so, uh, uh, we will, he will truly be missed. I know his family and a very, very lovely family and, uh, he will truly be missed. Um, and we also have, uh, you know, just to go on to, to speak to the other, um, other names here, um, is, uh, one of our current teacher's moms, uh, Yanet Patzner. And, um, Michelle is a current teacher in our district. And, um, I, my heart goes out to her. You know, losing a mom is, nothing, nothing can describe it. So my heart does go out to her. Uh, Nick Nissen and Joseph Rigio, Rigio, uh, OBHS alumni. Hug your kids. Hug your kids. And, uh, and I think even, even the people here that disagree on the masks can all agree that life is short and life is precious. Nick was my middle son's age. And, uh, he's no longer with us. And I can't even imagine the pain. I knew his mom. And I can't even imagine the pain that he and, uh, Joe Rigio's, Rigio's mom are going through right now. And my heart goes out to them. And I think that we all need to, um, we all need to remember how precious life is and what's important. Hug your kids, love your kids, and let's pull together like Olbridge does and protect each other the best way we know how. Thank you.
With that, is there anyone?
Well, I have, can I have just two quick things? Hopefully there are beat ones too.
Go ahead.
Um, I just, I just wanted to make a, a note. I, as I was looking through some of the names on our agenda today, um, something that I think is just, we see time and time again in Olbridge, which is wonderful, is when our alumni come back to teach. And I see several names that I know and of student teaching and long-term subs. So I think that is just, it, that's something that makes my heart feel good in that our kids come back. So, so that's a good one. Um, the other thing is, I'm not gonna-
Don't cry.
I'm not gonna cry today.
Don't cry.
Um, actually, Mr. Parton, and I guess maybe this is for you. Um, is the, is there a point in time the public isn't made aware of what we talked about in executive session last week?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, we don't just say, we don't say anything about that? Okay. Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Oh, real quick. I'm sorry. So I just wanted to, um, thank everyone for coming out tonight. And, uh, I'm personally excited about, uh, the new school year. And, um, you know, uh, hopefully I'll see you all in September. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Anybody else? Mr. Sididino?
Um, just, uh, uh, you know, I just want to touch on, on, on the Jack Phillips thing. I've said him a few, quite a few times, a real mentor to anyone in, in education. I, I, one of the best in the game, in, in my opinion. And I just have to thank him and his family that even at the, from the outset of the pandemic, when things became very dark for schools, he would text me. I'm looking at one of his texts now and just kind of, you know, cheer for me from wherever he was and reading about it. And the last one he sent me was, um, he always called me Commissioner. Uh, "Good morning, Commissioner." News, uh, news article in Tribune was well-stated. "Good luck, my friend." And things like that. He would call me, he wouldn't even say hello first. He'd say, "Commissioner," as soon as I answered the phone. And just, you know, wish us all well here in Olbridge. And I, I love his support for it. So anything we can do in the future to, to commemorate, um, his legacy, uh, obviously would be very well received. I want to thank Pam Rizkowski, my secretary. I'd saw her for many years. Today was her last day as, as she walked out. And I wish her and her husband Steve the, the best of retirement together as, uh, he retired several years ago as a fireman. And, um, I think, oh, I just want, we're in the middle right now of our administrators retreat. Uh, Dr. Hoaker and our team has done a great job with that. Um, three days of in-service and training and preparation for the new school year. Last week, we did the summer institute with so many of our returning teachers coming in on their off-time during the summer, um, not being compensated for it, to come learn as a group and as community. Um, something that is really only has had, occurred during this administration that we'd have hundreds of teachers come in during their off-time to learn and be part of a learning community and welcome in our new teachers. And Dr. Ho, I think 50 semi-new teachers this year?
55 and counting.
55 and counting, yes. Every day it's, it's different. The number keeps rising. So, um, So great job by everyone. And it really is something to celebrate and kick off. And we're excited to have your kids come back. And we're going to work with them, we're going to learn with them and make them feel safe and healthy as they continue to learn. So thank you very much, everyone, our community. And thank you for this board for offering your support as we move forward.
Thank you very much. All right. I think we do not have an executive session, right?
We do not.
We do not, that's great. So I need a motion to adjourn. Okay.
First of all, second.
Second, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.